All right, so Councilmember Iola should be online. Roberta, can you hear us okay? Roberta, if you can hear us, can you unmute and let us know?
I got you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, now we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions about the agenda tonight?
Not so much questions but requests to remove item 4A from the agenda and direct council to move it to a meeting after the new council members get sworn in after the election.
I think that's a good idea. Any objection? All right, we can remove item A off of executive sessions. Anything else on the agenda?
Not on the agenda, but it's kind of a little bit of a buzz with that.
Okay.
So I mentioned this in a meeting with Tansy's and I figured we should all hear it, but I would love it if the staff could find a way to disseminate the confidential information in executive sessions that are presented to us ahead of time. I think it's, since I've been on council, a bit challenging to prepare adequately for these kinds of meetings, especially when they're involved complex issues like item 4A. So I understand the sensitivity of the issue, but I do think it's something worth investigating and pursuing.
So we staff did have a brief conversation. I think the city attorney is going to be developing options to come back. Appreciate raising the, we'll try to find a path that both protects the confidential nature of these, but also gives additional access.
Yeah, and to do that, you're probably going to have to receive the packets from me, since there is confidential information in it, and I'll just do a standard paragraph that reminds everyone it's confidential only to be discussed in the executive session. But I think we can work on that for sure.
Yeah, that would just be very helpful for me and I'm sure others agree with that.
Anything else on the agenda? Any other staff notes?
Tonight, thank you.
Tammy?
No, nothing.
All right, we will jump right into briefing. So tonight we have the Colorado Hispanic Chamber.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Protown and Council. Appreciate your time tonight. Council, I remember this is kind of the third part in a three-part series we've been doing this year of bringing some of our business partners in to present to council on the work that they're doing and the partnership that we have. And we're really excited tonight. We've got a couple of special guests here tonight. I'm not talking about Jenny, she is special, but she's our special guest. But we've got folks from the Colorado Hispanic Chamber here. We've got Jesus Carillo, who's Director of Membership. You guys probably met Jesus. We've got Mike Farafino, who is the President. So thank you, Mike, and Jesus for being here. I'm going to turn over you in a minute. I do just want to give a quick overview on what we're going to be talking about. So we'll talk about our business partnerships as a whole, just a quick reminder of the other two presentations that you had this year. And then they'll turn it over to the Colorado Hispanic Chamber to give their overview and then we'll open it up for a discussion. Real fast, we heard first part of the year from the Thornton Area Chamber of Commerce. They came in in January and presented to council on the work they do with us and our partnership. We heard from AC Rep a couple of months ago about the membership that we have with them and all the services that they provide. And so again, as I mentioned, this is the third part series from the Colorado Hispanic Chamber. So with that, really quickly, ran through that fast. I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to turn over you. Here we go.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm too, how much time do we have? I want to make sure.
We've got about 25.
Well, wonderful. Thank you very much for having us here, Mrs. Mayor, Mrs. City Manager, and the esteemed City Council Members. It has been a pleasure working with your city, and we see a tremendous amount of opportunity in a similar sense in terms of who we are and what we do. We're an organization that have, you know, a good 40-plus years under our belts, you know, founded in 1978 by a group of business owners who really founded it because they didn't have a place in other business-based organizations. Now, we've seen a tremendous amount of change over the years, the biggest, most notable in 2000 with the census where there was this great discovery that the Hispanic community is considered the sleeping giants. And at that point, we understood, first time in a long time, the economic power of the Hispanic community. I will go through and skip around a little bit, but just to be able to start, we're fundamental believers that we are at an unprecedented multicultural economic revolution in this country with Hispanics serving the vanguard, currently representing 65 million individuals. If it was its own country, it would have the fifth-largest GDP in the world. So number five worldwide, the Latino US GDP. Just the consumer buying power is bigger than the Canadian economy. Colorado is the eighth-most populated Hispanic state. And we will look at the Denver Metro area, it's about 22% across the board. But the really interesting fact is, is the high amount of kids in public schools who identify as being Hispanic, depending upon the municipality, but straight across the board, you're looking at a 10% to 15% difference, just in that case, and sometimes even higher. So what this tells us is that we have a trajectory, you know, that Hispanics, and I use the term Hispanic for a moment, I'll kind of diverge, as just a point of comfortability, but also with the understanding that it is a term of ethnic identity. People choose to use Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx, Chicano, and a bunch of others. For sake of brevity, you know, I want to recognize that Hispanic is not something everybody shares, but it happens to be in the title of our name, and I didn't pick that, so I will use that. But it is also ethnicity is not a race. You can be Black Hispanic, White Hispanic, Asian Hispanic, Indigenous Hispanic, and more often, you know, a combination of one or more. So it makes it a little bit more complicated to be able to go through and define what it is we're looking at. There are commonalities sometimes in language, but not always, in terms of religion, not always, you know. But you have these different levels of the way we like to look at Hispanics in a couple of different buckets. You know, they're not completely representative of the entire community, but thinking about language on one side, English dominant, Spanish dominant, bilingual, there's the, let's say, this, this, you know, if you imagine basically this side of like culturation and assimilation between being, you know, very invested in your home country or your parents' home country's culture versus adopting 100% of, you know, the United States traditions, and oftentimes there's a unique blend. We started seeing in about the, you know, 2005, some really interesting things happening where we were starting to import a new version of your Hispanic-American traditions that were not just going to other states and to northern Mexico, but became really fundamental in terms of breaking through Mexican culture. So this bilateral kind of sharing of cultural traditions in a lot of different ways. In this case, now we see how popular Dia de los Muertos is, Cinco de Mayo, that is unfortunately not the Mexican Independence Day as some people believe. But, you know, those are just two examples, you know, where we see this overwhelming amount of popularity, you know, that I think that, you know, salsa outsells ketchup, you know, and tortillas are right up there, and you know, like any single like high carbohydrate product. So there is this kind of unique blending that we're seeing in a lot of different ways. So for us as an organization, you know, it's important to be able to go through and help serve as a bridge, like a lot of chambers are. But to help better understand the Hispanic and Latino community, help dispel some of the different myths, you know, help people understand how to contact and communicate, and help people tap into what we believe to be, based upon the numbers I just mentioned, is going to be a great bet to be a significant part of everybody's future workforce, small business ownership, and also voters. Backspace, so, you know, that's why we do what we do. And so Colorado, as the eighth-most populated Hispanic state in the country, you know, becomes a really critical point. The Denver DMA, which is the media market, you know, is not just Denver, but it's about 2/3 of the state. That is the 15th-ranked Hispanic media market compared to 23rd general market. So we are a bigger Hispanic market than we are a general market in regard to electronic broadcast and the entire like media support, media sales. So we always also think that is a really notable piece. Our Board of Directors, really quickly, we'll go through. So our current Chair of the Board is Tish Mays, our former Board Chair is Jake Salazar, both of them are small business owners. Tish has a consulting business with the former Mayor of Denver, Wellington Webb, and does a lot of work in the consulting space. Jake is a multi, let's say, talented entrepreneur and head owner of restaurants and, you know, Broomfield to start, and all kinds of different unique kind of areas between media and hemp and early adopter of marijuana at some point and sold that. Luis Cologne is a former member of John Hickenlooper's cabinet, and is a really unique individual who has a degree from Georgia Tech and has two higher degrees from, I want to say, the London School of Economics, and one other area, but he has this MBA from University of Michigan, too. But he is currently serving as the CFO and of the State Judicial Department. Rich Nahha is a serial entrepreneur. Him and his wife own a boutique hotel and award-winning surf resort in Costa Rica. They also own the 100,000 and 150,000 square foot La Plaza Colorado, which is out in Aurora. And Paulette Tate has her own consulting business, and if you recognize the last name Tate, that is Penfield Tate's wife. And Tim Aragon, who was the first Hispanic to serve as a managing director of a major law firm in Colorado. And I don't count Ken Salazar because they opened up the office after he left the Obama administration, but Tim was the head of Hogan Levels, and now he serves as the General Counsel for the Denver Broncos. But he's homegrown. He is also one of our executive members. And then we have Tatiana Arueo, who is the Colorado and Utah President of Telemundo. Sofia Aguilard, who is a longtime entrepreneur, Nico Crenajo, who actually worked for our organization. His uncle is Bill Verall, who was the former Mayor of Denver, when John Hickenlooper and head of Dr. Cog and head of CDOT. And, you know, I'm not going to, I'll highlight a few others. Denis Myers, who was the Director of Operations for then Vice President Biden and just ended up spending three years as the Regional Director of GSA. Mila Robles, who is one of the co-owners of the Coco Restaurant Group. They have, I think, a total now of 12 restaurants. Juan Pedro, who is the CEO of Culinary Creative, and that is probably the most in vogue restaurant group in the United States right now. They're the ones that own A5, forget-me-not, you know, and, you know, let's say five of the top 20 restaurants in Denver. And, you know, and a number of, so, and the point I go through and mention is we've got a really diverse group of business leaders, community leaders that all have a vested interest in terms of creating a bigger tent, you know, and finding different creative ways to go through and create economic activity within our city and within our state. The mission of the Chamber is really to promote and advance the growth of Hispanic business. And if you go a little deeper in our strategic plan, you'll see that some key components are, one, being able to go through and really hyper-focus on a lot of data. We do probably the best job of collecting second and third-party data within the state on Hispanics. And this is everything from psychographics, value graphics, demographics, this is something we're always willing to share, put on different types of training sessions, lunch and learns, anything else. We also really prioritize health and understanding how critical that is in terms of being able to go through and play a role in this overall ecosystem and trying to improve health access and health outcomes even before COVID came up. We also look at entrepreneurship, you know, as this critical way of being able to go through and support our small business ecosystem, which, as we know, every major election cycle, you know, small business is the backbone of our country, and finding different ways to make sure that there's a difference in understanding, you know, that if you have five employees, it's different than having 600 employees or 50,000 employees. So really, we're, you know, we're fans about looking at different tiered structures in terms of when we think about different ways to regulate, you know, or implement different types of what we would consider to be your general not-as-friendly policies to business, but also critical parts of being able to go through and create a comfortable, safe, and meaningful workforce. So finding that way, I think, is really important to not necessarily put too much of burden on small business that aren't prepared. But then again, too, understanding that if you have 50,000 employees, you know, there's a different level of capacity of being able to go through and make some of these things work. Our membership is made up of, you know, for the most part, the majority of small business members, but it still is, it's an 80/20 rule. You know, I would say about 20% of our members supply 80% of our revenue. So we look at our corporate, let's say, partners as partners and not as members. And this was a very important part a long time ago where the then COO of the Molson Coors International, Mauricio, you remember him? You know, who kind of said, and this is when I was actually a board member and not the president CO, you know, I'm from Molson Coors, like, I don't need help with this, this, and this, and this. You know, I'm here to help everybody else do this, this, and this. So it was a really important part of distinction to not kind of, you know, confuse what the purpose was. You know, another really big piece that we think is important is our partnership with municipalities like yourselves and understanding that there's opportunity in terms of being able to go through and help support the businesses in the community that's already there, but also help create basically an understanding and bridge, whether it's connection and relationships between, you know, the different individual elected officials that are sitting in a municipality with others within different parts of the state that may have different aligned interests, or really looking at how do we start and help support, you know, the creation of new businesses in a specific area. You know, this is a little bit more of just a look at kind of a snapshot of some of the basically overarching kind of numbers, you know, when we think about, you know, the 4 million businesses that are currently operating. The 62.5 million is short about 3 million right now, so it's 65, 66 million plus in terms of population, you know. And the 2.6 trillion is also a little low on that side in terms of the ultimate like GDP in terms of buying power. But the growth is a really critical part. Hispanic entrepreneurs, growth market, Hispanic population, growth market, you know, and really thinking about this idea that if Hispanics succeed, and this is kind of one of those sayings, because of a sizable population, you know, that they represent in our different municipalities, they succeed, we all succeed, you know. So when we think about Denver Public Schools and some of the challenges they've had, you know, within their school district, and we look at the population at 58% Hispanic, you know, part of it is just, it's, it just is a realistic idea of saying, you know, are there commonalities basically among this group? And once again, it's not a homogeneous group. So even in that case, part of what Tom Boesberg started doing is really thinking through in terms of getting a better sense of, you know, where are these students falling along this spectrum of one language, language spoken at home, assimilation and acculturation, you know, and then country of origin, to better understand the different types of supports that could be put in place, you know, for these different groups. The, let's see. We kind of wonder this, all right. This gives you a little bit of an idea of some of the activities we do. We've got about seven to nine different activities a month, which is sometimes surprising, you know, based upon how small our staff is, but I'm sure you all understand the, you know, this do more with less kind of mentality that all of us, you know, are accustomed to doing. We do a lot of training sessions on everything from AI to CRMs to tax, everything you can imagine that a traditional chamber does. In addition to a lot of the marketing and outreach and communication pieces with what is a specialized market, both in English and Spanish for Hispanics. We do a number of different leads group meetings. I think we have five, is that right? You know, so, you know, like that are scattered throughout the Denver Metro area to make sure that we're allowing an opportunity for people to engage in a little bit more of a smaller one-on-one group, and also being able to go through. It's a sense of, you know, it's, you know, Ludes Group, a book club, like, anytime you're getting people together with a certain shared interest, there's an opportunity to be able to go through and create a little bit more of a stickier, you know, cohesion, you know, among each other, you know. And we encourage them to do business among each other. We encourage the board to do business with each other, you know, and a lot of the corporations as well, to find different ways that they can do business with small businesses. And really looking at, you know, one, you know, the women and minority business-owned kind of enterprises, but really, at the end of the day, it's any locally-owned small business, and really thinking through within a certain geographic area, you know, what are the opportunities for Denver Public Schools to really go through and work with the small businesses within the Denver Public Schools trading area, we think is important. But as we go through, it's, you know, the circle gets expanded, and we start thinking about the Denver Metro area and about supporting those different elements. And when we have these anchor institutions like Denver Public Schools, which is a $1.4 billion annual budget, it is the largest landowner in the city of Denver, and it is the largest employer. We realize there's a tremendous opportunity for Thornton-based businesses to do business with Denver Public Schools. And Denver Health is very similar. So that is our next goal, is really thinking through, how do we go through and really catalyze that, a little bit more of a formalized area, of just from a small business perspective within our surrounding municipalities. The signature events, we have Sabour, which is in the, the first Friday of August, and if, who has been to Sabour before? Anybody? Well, we'll make sure we send out an invitation this next year to all of you, so if you can remind me, Jenny. It is a wonderful event. It is, you know, 2,500, 3,000 people, the Denver Botanic Gardens, that I think is one of the most beautiful spots in Colorado. You know, we will go through and have about 40 different restaurants from, you know, everything from, you know, Colombian, Peruvian, Venezuelan, Costa Rican, El Salvadorian, Guatemalan, Mexican, American, Canadian, you know. We call it kind of this idea of this sensory experience of the Americas, you know, through food, music, drink, you know, and everything else in art. So it's, we have about 100 different actors that are dressed up as different cultural icons. For instance, you know, one year we had somebody recreating the Dos Fritas, which was sitting on a bench, you know, the classic painting, to somebody standing up on a soapbox, reading the poetry of Octavio Paz, you know, and a lot of different fun things in between. We also have about 100 different live musicians sprinkled throughout, you know, dancers from all of those representative countries, and everything from a wine bar that is sponsored by Silver Oak and, you know, and some other really high-end to, you know, six different tequilas and mezcal's and, you know, and, you know, for those that don't drink, we do have non-alcoholic spirits as well. But, you know, we definitely encourage sampling of everything. But it's a wonderful event. That is our signature event. We, we were great, I think, from an event creation and from, you know, to give you an idea, the purpose of Sabour, it's a great celebration, it's a great way for us to highlight these different businesses, but it's also a way to be able to go through and provide an experiential kind of understanding of exactly the somewhat boring data points that I just went through previously. You know, you start to get a sense that this is not monolithic, that this is different, you know, that you're seeing the power, you're seeing the, you know, the different types of uniqueness within the cultures, the music, you know, the different types of food and drink, but also the sheer like power of this community in a lot of ways from an economic perspective, you know, which is one of the real big takeaways that we always want people to be able to go through and experience, that it sometimes, you know, defies what we sometimes hear on the news or see, you know, and there's a different narrative sometimes that is able to be placed based upon what you're seeing here or who you're meeting. We have a number of different like collab events, you know, that Jesus will go through a couple of these others. You know, we have a daily radio program that we do in Spanish that's broadcast on multiple stations. So if there's any information at some point or an opportunity to be able to take, you know, anybody on to share information about the city, we're more than willing to go through and extend that. We do a lot of procurement events in terms of helping businesses, municipalities, nonprofits better understand how they can tap into the different types of small business opportunities and find, you know, a greater amount of diversity in terms of their own, you know, supplier network. We have a leadership program that I think we're really proud of, and, you know, I think we, I know Jenny, you went through it, I think, last year, and we usually have somebody from the city go through it. And it's, I think we're in our 13th year, and part of it is, one, we're proud that, you know, in a lot of ways, you know, there are so many small businesses and nonprofits that we go through and provide scholarships to. And in part of the relationships we have, you know, you also provide a scholarship to, you know, a small business or nonprofit. And so we keep it, you know, extremely affordable, you know, free for 85% of people because it's important, I think, for them to be able to go through and really save a lot of the money. And, you know, there are other programs and certificate programs and college and higher degrees that sometimes putting this towards that will be really valuable, and it's something we can do and find different types of corporate support to be able to make happen. But we focus on a couple of different areas, which is, one is the data and demographic side and this idea of identity. The other piece is, is that we focus on health, education, which are two critical areas that seem to be a little bit more of a moving target. And from an academic perspective, you don't really find a class or a degree path that keeps you up to date without really specializing back in the real world in terms of understanding where you're at in a couple of these different key areas. So it's something we really enjoy, and we have a new program that we're getting ready to launch, and this kind of gives you an idea how we think. We historically have done a, a day where we will bring out a member of the Mexican national team and put on a soccer clinic, and we invite a number of kids throughout the Denver Metro area. And part of why we do what we do will give you an idea of how we think. Now, we could just put on the event, invite the governor, get some sponsors, and, you know, slap ourselves in the back, take some pictures, you know, the kids come out, there we go, call it a day. But we realize how important this opportunity is that we have a Mexican national player, and we've got a really strong partnership with Pepsi to be able to go through and do this. And so what we do is it's free, but to be admitted into the program, you have to agree to read for 15 minutes every day during the summertime. Helps stave off the summer brain drain and helps Hispanic students where they are notoriously low, which is reading comprehension in third grade, okay? Two, you have to commit to live a little bit of a healthier lifestyle as determined by our health partners, you know. Diabetes, hypertension, big problems in the Hispanic community costs our healthcare system a whole bunch, right? A lot of it's lifestyle-based, and we realize that this is the beginning of being able to go through and take that step in the right direction, okay? Third, your parents have to agree to support you doing number one and number two, and we realize this is a generational, okay, effort. And then four, your parents have to agree when they drop you off to go to a mini clinic on finance and health. And they too will get to meet the superstar that they sometimes want to meet more badly than the kids. And so we're not changing the world, but you're getting a sense of how we're using soccer, you know, as a language to communicate and incent, you know, a, let's say, behavioral shifts in what we feel are really critical areas. So we have a Young Entrepreneurs Academy that we're getting ready to launch, and we're using the same fundamental theory. Is that, you know, we kind of joke around that, you know, with Hispanics and Latinos, that, you know, that, you know, our primary languages of love are food, music, soccer, and money, you know. And that's why entrepreneurship is such a big, big piece, you know. My father was an entrepreneur. He came as an immigrant in the mid-'60s, you know, and I always think too, like, I don't know if he could do anything else because, one, I don't know if he could work for anybody. That's, that's one of the biggest things. It's his personality. I don't know if he could ever be, you know, working for anybody else. But he found, you know, like hard work and opportunity, and I grew up in Arvada, you know. And so part of this was, is this idea of how strong this, this place is, but it's also this great point of communication in terms of understanding. And so what we're doing is we're using this as a way to communicate with programmatic pieces in junior high or middle school and high school. You know, and really, it's a leadership program, you know, for kids that are on the bubble that wouldn't go to a leadership program because they don't want to. You know, but they'll go to an entrepreneurship program, and so it's dressed up in this case. And so, yes, if somebody wants to go through and make cookies, we will teach them how to use a, you know, how to use basically commercial kitchen, how to get them you know, how to use basically commercial kitchen, how to get them on the shelves at Walmart. It's like Jay on steroids. But it's also really important to be able to go through and have a piece that is exposure to all these different workforce options. You know, helping to have a multi generational contact with the parents and the grandparents who we know are critical in terms of helping them understand. And also being able to go through and see people that look like them, that share their stories of success, but also see people that don't look like them. And instead of sharing their s- stories of success, sharing their stories of failure. You know, I think a lot of us realize that all the great entrepreneurship stories that we are most familiar with recently are littered with failure after failure after failure. Apple, Microsoft, you know, Tesla, you know, like all these great entrepreneurs have failed many times, you know? But they kept going and it was never plan A that worked. So that is a really important piece, you know, in terms of this grit and resilience and being able to go through and think through that we think is really important. And in the betas that we've used thus far has been really popular. So there's more to come on that, but with that, I will kind of let you kind of continue on more specifically and in terms of time.
And one thing that I want to mention too, um, is, um, uh, some of the events that we have, they sound like fun, right? They sound like very attractive to just go on pretty much a beautiful event. But we always try to do everything where we can hit several objectives with one or several targets with one shot. For instance, Sabo being what it is, it had opened the opportunity to bring in other countries, to come in and, and explore opportunities for import and export. Last year we had the state of Jalisco. That's where tequila is being made. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with Jalisco, but Jalisco is, uh, one of three of the major cities for Mexico. One of the biggest partners to the US where they have pharma, they have auto, the auto industry. They have so many things to offer, not just to sell to the US, but also to buy from the US. So their interest in Sabo was this is a great door for us to come in and start this kind of, uh, communication. Open the doors of communication to learn more about the state. And this is what we offer not only to our members, but I think for not only the city of Denver, but all their cities around us. I think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity there. Some of the pictures that you see on the screen, uh, it's, we go from our list groups, uh, can we go back to this? You guys are very familiar with this room. This is, this is the Alianza. This is the, uh, Alianza. This is where the magic is happening. We have at least four list groups, uh, happening there, two in Spanish, two in English. And we started to see, uh, a lot of business happening and, uh, out of this. We also use the, the displays to also bring in, um, individuals who are professionals to come in and not just share a story, but also to teach us how to do, uh, uh, things better. We have, uh, our, our leadership program. That's pretty much for you guys to have a better visual reference as to what happens. This is, uh, our, our class of twenty twenty five, uh, at Ramos Law Offices. This is one of our coffee socials. We have at least, uh, uh, two every three months. This is at one of our locations here in the city of Thornton, uh, Coco Pirata. Uh, we also do ribbon carnage, just like any other chambers. Uh, we offer this to all of our small businesses. We, as, uh, our president CEO mentioned, we have a radio show that we go live and we talk about what we do, especially what our members do. And a lot of the things that we receive from you guys, especially through Alianza, we come in and, and share those, uh, stories on radio as well. So if they, if you guys have an event in the city of Thornton, we use that as part of our content. We also, uh, do things that are not necessarily normally for, for chambers. But then again, as, as our, our president CEO mentioned is, we are, uh, an out of the box thinkers. We believe that we plant the seeds of the little ones at an early age, their minds will open up. Their perspective will be a lot wider and it is through experiences, positive experiences. And while doing that, remember when I say we get a few, uh, uh, targets with one shot? Well, we're bringing our sponsors, we're bringing our businesses, they connect. We are helping our community and we're creating a whole new thing that can provide, uh, not just for our chamber membership, but also for our community, what they need, which is connection. And this is just a quick example that, uh, we had an amazing time. Chris, uh, did an amazing job in hosting us, uh, at, at your park here in, uh, in the city of Thornton. We have, uh, thousands of families that, that, that joined us. And it was really nice to see that some of them, they were not expecting this to happen at the, at the park. Actually saying, you know what? I want to join you guys. And we're like, welcome. So we hope to continue these in the next years to come. We have a few things that we've been talking about perhaps doing a little different, but, uh, to, to do it in a way that we can expand and we can grow it properly. We have different learning sessions. Again, everything that we're learning here in the city of Thornton and relearning as well, we are applying it in the city of Aurora and in other areas. And let me tell you, I'm not, uh, I'm not embarrassed or, or shy to say that, uh, what you guys are doing at the Alianza, that's something that other cities should also do as well. I think it's a huge example for all their municipalities to take a look and see how it's the, the proper way to support small businesses. Cause at the end of the day, it will go back to the city. The, uh, so this is one of them at the city of Aurora. The, uh, we have some different collab events. When I say collaborating in collaboration with other nonprofits, other organizations. Again, it's not just about us, it's about, uh, the chamber, but it's about all of us that we are part of this, uh, great state of Colorado. This is when we did a welcome for, uh, Joaquin Citron, uh, who is now the CEO for the Denver Housing Authority. This is, uh, a partnership that we have with, uh, Sirius Fest at the Film Fest in the city of Denver. An amazing opportunity also again to bring in a little bit of talent from outside, a little bit of entertainment. But then again, anything and everything we do is nothing but an excuse for to connect people. This is another collab program with, uh, we called it Abre, which is, uh, basically a, an opportunity to support small businesses. We provided, uh, over, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, uh, of grants. And many of them were in the city of Thornton and many of them were to the right hands. Many small businesses are very shy to ask for help. They, you talk about grants and they immediately say, well, it's not for me, right? It's kind of like, they feel like it's the lottery, like they're, they buy the ticket, but they'll never win. So what do we do? Connecting with people that we know in the community. And they refer us back, small businesses that they knew that needed help post COVID. And one of those great partners was also Alianza. And thank you for sending those folks because as you can see, these folks here on these pictures, they, they were not only happy for receiving these, uh, these, uh, these funds, but they as good businesses that they are, they don't see twenty five hundred dollars. They already see what this is going to become to fund perhaps other investments within their business.
And quick point of clarification. So it's close to three hundred businesses at tw- twenty five hundred dollars a piece, so.
This is one, just so you can get an idea of what we do with different, um, organizations. This is with RTD to, uh, help support small biz to get more, uh, procurement opportunities. This is one of our, uh, gatherings at the, uh, the welcome to the new, uh, board and also a, uh, leadership reception. These images here are from our monthly mixers. This is from, uh, event, uh, an event that we have, just Sabo. Another one with RTD, one of RTD. And, and this, this one brings us, uh, down to, uh, the partnership that we have with you guys. The membership value that we provide, it's a, uh, we always think of giving more, uh, and also doing more and saying less. Which, uh, in a way, we, uh, we're giving you a membership that provides you with, uh, benefits, just like any other membership, uh, we have and plus. One of the partnerships that we, uh, had agree, uh, uh, one of the things that we agreed to do was not only providing a membership, uh, benefits, but also, uh, doing more, like more events and partnership with the, with, with you guys. Bring, uh, promote every single thing you guys do through our different, uh, um, media and, uh, video outlets that we have. Our partners that we have in media as well. And, uh, and also, uh, finding ways to bring in more individuals to your center that needed your help.
So with that, we will stop and try to be respectful of time, but also, um, open it up to if there are any questions or you.
There's a couple more slides.
Let's get that picture, Jenny. Just to get that picture, Jenny.
You know, it's, uh, how they say, a picture says a thousand words. It's, uh, it's not just, we say we're gonna do, it's doing it and actually getting good results. So thank you so much for hosting us again. And hopefully the next one is, it's even a lot more, uh, a lot bigger and, uh, uh, with a lot of your attendance.
Thank you for the partnership. I think we will put it up to questions, comments, thoughts from council.
Yeah, does Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce have any relationships or ties to the Naleo organization? If you're not familiar with that, it's a.
Familiar.
Okay. I, I was able to attend the, their conference this year and, and noticed that, you know, some of the other, uh, states had a presence there with their Chamber of Commerce and seeing how we, we have the eighth largest population. I, I, I felt like a little sense of pride that Colorado would, would belong well there, so.
You're, you're absolutely right. And there have been times I've attended before. But it's, you know, we don't have a formal relationship, but it's, you know, it's interesting. I just speaking to Elena and, you know, from the Latino caucus and just talking about, I think there are plans on January ninth to go through and for a lot of the Hispanic collective officials, regardless of party affiliation, um, to host, um, an event that we're talking about trying to go through health support. You know, um, you know, just to kind of, it's almost like a, you know, like a mini Naleo.
I think I know what you're talking about, cause I attended.
We did it last year, I think. I think there may be forty people, but there's a, a lot more that could come. But you're right, there's a lot of opportunity on that side and, you know, and you're right. In a lot of those different ways too, part of it's being able to kind of create a, you know, a different sense of community too throughout the different regions and how big Colorado's population is at that point.
Yeah, and you know, what I really appreciate and since you've been to Naleo, you probably understand that, that, uh, one of the great benefits of Naleo is the fact that they are a non partisan organization. And they have many different perspectives, uh, from elected officials and leaders from the Latino community. One of the interesting things about this year's conference was the discussions related to the, uh, new immigration policies and the, and the major shift that's been happening through enforcement. And so has the, uh, Colorado Hispanic Chamber of Commerce also had similar conversations among their members? And, and how would you guys approach that, um, in those discussions with your members?
On, on what currently is happening or just the different? You know, I think people, I mean, I think this is really interesting. I just spoke to a couple of different groups last week and, um, there's two different things. So on one side is understanding that, yes, it's not monolithic, that you saw a record amount of Latinos vote for a Republican presidential candidate this last November. And, you know, and the question is why? And so I think that there always has been some core like alignment in terms of values, you know, in a lot of key different areas. Now, there also has been a little bit more of a legacy, you know, of, you know, of minorities voting Democratic, with the exception of the Cubans down in Florida, you know, that, you know, for different political reasons, you know, decided to basically go through. And so, but you saw, I think that part of what was a big catalyst in this election was the, you know, I will say the newcomers, which are the Venezuelans, you know, that were coming in. And there were a lot of, you know, and I will, you know, use a term, long term contributor. You know, to describe an Hispanic family, could be mixed status. One person could be undocumented, two, none, but long term contributors that have been paying taxes, working, you know, kind of trying to play their role within, you know, our economy and our communities. Not asking for anything, not really getting anything, you know, that felt like they were patiently waiting for some type of meaningful immigration reform. And, you know, this has been since the early two thousands. And when you saw a group that was provided temporary protected status, you know, at a substantial amount and then a lot of different resources from the city of Denver that went into supporting food, job training, housing and everything else, this was kind of an unprecedented level. So even Jesus and I have small business members of ours and community members that initially came in and were, you know, putting together like coat drives and, you know, but there was this point too, it was like, oh, here's a coat. And there was this feeling like, well, I don't need it. I'm going to get a new one. So there, there was conflict that was created between the dominant Spanish speaking communities that I don't think was ever properly addressed. And I think there were opportunities to be able to further integrate because I think that the long term viability was going to be, how do you integrate this Venezuelan community into the greater dominant Spanish speaking community? And that was part of the challenge. And so it was the Hispanic retail stores, you know, that were first like hit or robbed or, you know, and, you know, and it just, I mean, there were, there are some, you know, wonderful individuals that came here, you know, for all the right reasons. But I think sometimes when you get a, you know, I, I tend to believe just as a, you know, man and a former young boy myself, that some of the most irresponsible humans in the world are boys between the ages of eighteen and twenty nine, you know? And you got to pack them together without jobs. You know, you just have them making some potential poor decisions. And that's kind of what was happening. Where we're seeing people, you know, we work with a company that does, you know, they're the official AV provider for the National Western Stock Show. And they do all of the Hispanic events and they're Hispanic themselves. They feel very comfortable in, and that's kind of a rough environment. If, you know, like going to the National Western Stock Show at a pack night with five bands on stage, it's a, you know, it's a different experience. It's not like going to see U2 at, you know, at the football stadium. They had a group of different men that were living in right around their houses, like, and he's scared. He's scared for his family, you know, he didn't feel comfortable, you know? There were a lot of, you know, jewelry stores getting robbed and then two, just in not a whole lot of, of, of response. So that's one example, but you started to see that cleave kind of build up. And so part of it was ultimately, I think, kind of more of a tipping point of saying like, I've waited too long. Like these guys are, you know, and, you know, these are my kind of people via language, but they're not my people, you know? And you're telling me I'm helping your people, you know? And this was the feeling from what was almost an under resourced community before COVID, under resourced and never completely valued or appreciated during COVID. And then all of a sudden this happened, it just was kind of more of a perfect storm of a lot of different areas. So it's, what we do is we understand that people are at different points in terms of their personal experiences and how they feel about this right now. That's one. Two is that, you know, finding a solution after the dust settles, you know, is going to be really critical. You know, because we like to think about this not as red and not as blue, but red, white and blue. And, you know, how does Team USA continue to support the number one GDP in the world? And do we want to have the number one GDP in the world? If we do, we are going to need to repopulate at the level that will allow us economically to stay at that spot. And currently we do not repopulate ourselves. We need to depend upon immigration. This is why China is slipping as the number two, because they are not repopulating at the rate they need to either. And as far as I know, there is nothing called the Chinese dream that is encouraging people worldwide to seek China as a home. So there's value. We need to figure out what the right model is in different ways, you know? And I think it's going to be important for the dust to settle and the rhetoric to die down. But it's, uh, to your point, you know, people are, are in different pockets in terms of the board. You know, on Hispanic side, I don't think there's a universal, like overall feeling. So part of it's being respectful. And understanding everybody's got a little bit of a different experience on that side and it's complicated right now, really complicated. You know, so we've tried to go through and do what we can, um, with small businesses. And, you know, different, you know, organizations that may initially have been, you know, really, you know, anti one thing or the other. But now you're seeing a lot of small businesses because of the increased amount of fear, it's hitting them economically. Every restaurant is down. Every restaurant is down. Every place of hospitality is down, grocery store's up. You know, child, like, school attendance down, hospital, like, you know, healthcare visits down, you know, so you know, we're seeing supply chain disruptions, you know, we're seeing ag, you know, a lot of different parts of the San Luis Valley starting to suffer. And also people feeling caught in a really tough position as a non-Hispanic, feeling like, you know, like immigration is really critical to our business, to dairy, to ag, to beef. But, you know, if we speak out, are we gonna go through and be retaliated against? So it's, it's a tough area, and I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does.
Enough and probably a little more.
Yeah, I understand. It's actually very similar to the conversations that we had in Naleo, and I just wanted to end up, end by saying, uh, thank you for coming to presenting to the council. We are very grateful for your, the partnership that you have with our Alianza and we hosted an event with you as well in June, and I would just, you know, love to continue this partnership and we very appreciate it. Also had a blast at the end of Pesci.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for having us and, and like I said, it has been wonderful, Jenny, thank you. Adam, you know, uh, we've had a wonderful time working with the city and working with Alianza. And, and, you know, as a reminder, we're a nonpartisan organization, we like to support basically ideas in both parties, we take positions on ballot initiatives. And we really do try to make sure that we are as authentically engaged with both parties at all times, understanding how critical it is to be able to go through. And from an Hispanic perspective, you know, there is a, you know, a Democratic and Republican municipalities, a lot of times it is nonpartisan, but it's not really not, you know? But understanding that it, you know, like entrepreneurship is entrepreneurship and it's about being able to go through and find good ways to support the growth of these businesses that create jobs, create tax base, you know, and sales tax right now is such a critical way considering the way we fund things in our state with Tabor, like, we've got to go through and sell things, you know? It is important for us to be able to go through and just generate the sales tax necessary to make the wheels turn in a lot of different ways. So in that sense, you know, it's not party alignment, it's a little bit more like, what do we do to kind of go through and incubate and support the needs of small businesses to continue to make sure they not only survive, you know, but they thrive.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming this evening. Very much appreciate it. Always great to hear what you guys are working on.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. All right, next up, we have a BTAC recommendation for business improvement grants.
We knew the transition would be awkward back to back. All right, so thank you again for your time. Transition to some business improvement grant BTAC recommendations. So council asked BTAC in 2024 to review the process for the business improvement grant and, uh, and then make recommendations on uh, changes for 2026. BTAC took that assignment very seriously and spent multiple meetings going through. There, if you, if councilor remembers, there was about six new BTAC members to start last year, and so they hadn't gone through the grant process yet. So after the first couple of rounds of grant process, BTAC would stop and talk about how that process went, get the input from the folks that had been through before as well as input from some of the new folks. Uh, and they spent multiple meetings talking about that project, a process and, and talked to figure out if there's opportunities for improvement. So I do wanna introduce another special guest for this year tonight, Paul Gurdian, who is the BTAC Chair this year, and we're really excited to have him here. He's gonna do a large presentation. Uh, you guys know Jenny Leon as well, our Small Business Manager. She's gonna run through some background on some of the programs and how, how the, uh, the big, the business improvement grant program works as a whole. Uh, just, just to kind of make sure everybody remembers, it's been a little while since we talked about it. So I will turn it over to Jenny to run through that and and then we'll leave it over to Paul to go through some of the recommendations.
Okay. Everybody, thank you for having us. Here's the agenda. Adam kind of skimmed over it. I'm gonna cover an overview of BTAC and BIG, give you some historical data from the last year about the grant, and then I'll pass it over to Paul. He'll tell you about the follow-up for the things that you guys requested that they talked about, and then also they have a couple of their own uh, recommendations that they would like you to consider. So BTAC, as you know, is council-appointed. It's a group of fifteen business members, business representatives and/or residents from Thornton. The general purpose is that they discuss issues happening in the community that affect business, and then they report that back to staff and council. So they're kind of the go-between liaison between the city and businesses. Their main responsibilities include overseeing the BIG grant, uh, helping to plan two networking events per year as well as the business awards. Um, giving an annual update to council regarding what they did over the past year and then their goals for the next year. And then providing feedback to staff on current proposed policies and programs. For example, uh, tomorrow we have a meeting and Parks and Rec is going to come and present on get their opinion on some future planning ideas that they have. So BIG is our business improvement grant. It is available to help existing businesses fund interior and exterior improvements and capital improvements. It's mostly a fifty-fifty reimbursement program and businesses are scored with a score sheet. The main requirements are that a business has a Thornton license for twelve months, they have a lease for twelve months. Uh, they are in compliance with all city departments. They are able to have up to twenty, to receive up to twenty thousand dollars one time every five years. And home business, home-based businesses are eligible to apply for up to one thousand dollars in matching marketing grant funds. Um, the overview of the grant process is that typically we like businesses to go online and apply. Then that way more people get a copy. We have like a electronic, uh, kind of like a little trail that we can always go back and, and follow if we need to. Carla gets a copy, I get a copy. And we work with all the departments to verify that this project, if it needs permits or things like that, are they in compliance? Um, are they, are they able to move to the next process, next part of this process? And then Carla reviews it for completeness. Did they send in all the receipts? Have they, did they sign their W nine, things like that, the details? And then when it is deemed complete, it goes to BTAC for them to review, score and approve. So there's a couple of different ways that you can be approved for the grant. You can get pre-approved or you can do the project and get approved later. So pre-approval is if I want to put a patio on my restaurant, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna have enough money. So first I'm gonna apply, see if BTAC is willing to help me with this project. If they say yes, then I will go and do the project and I will send in all the receipts. If I am going to put a patio on my restaurant, no matter if BTAC helps me or not, I will just go ahead and do it. I'll get all the permits, I'll do the project, I will have all the receipts. And then I will send my application in and BTAC will either grant or deny my application. Um, then staff issues a check request and and then at that, also if, once we issue a check request, it's done, you're done. But there are situations where a business may want to pull their application to ensure that they are eligible to apply next year for the grant. And the reason that you would pull an application is say maybe you got pre-approved to do a parking lot, but it's already October thirty-first and it's starting to snow and this project is not gonna happen this year. That is when we would talk to you about that and say, why don't you pull your application and reapply in January? Then this can all happen again. Um, it's a, they do have to reapply, they do get rescored. But because they already were approved, it's just, it's a much simpler process for them.
Maybe a couple, a couple of quick points, sorry Jenny, you touched on this a little bit. So when we get the applications, we review them for completeness and then we do get them to other city departments to review. And so when BTAC gets the packet, they know that that company is current on sales tax. Uh, they know if they've, you know, what their history is like, they have, they have a business license, they're aware of all of those things. And then, once the grants are approved by BTAC, uh, through the scoring rubric, that is just approval that says, if you do this work, you will get, if they haven't done the project, if you do this work, you will get the reimbursement. So then they feel comfortable knowing what that reimbursement will be to go out and do the work. They still have to get city permits, so we are not granting permits. That is not the role of, of the BIG grant. It is saying, if you do the work that you have committed to doing, you will get X amount of dollars reimbursement. That gives them the, the confidence to feel good in going about doing that, doing that work, but they still have to get all the city permits and approvals. So it doesn't by any means circumvent that process.
Okay, um, the scoring system that BTAC uses, it's very tiny, so it's right for you to see. It does have multiple sections. And each section has various elements that they must consider. Sections one and two are non-subjective. You get the points or you don't. You have under five employees or you have more than ten employees, and those are different scoring weights, because, um, the grant, the spirit of the grant is to, uh, lean towards helping our smaller businesses. Section three is subjective. Each line, uh, there's two lines and each is worth zero to five points. This is where the commissioners can decide if the application was a strong application, if the project seems like a viable project, is it a good use of the city's money? Timeline of the grant process, so this, the dates, I put dates on that, that correlate to this year, but they kind of flex a little bit depending on how they fall on the calendar. So January two, the grants, the middle window opens. The end of July, it closes. November one is a deadline to start pre-approved projects. So like I said, a, a painting the outside of your building or a, or a parking lot. December ninth, beginning of December, um, we need to have all of the final reimbursement information, so we can submit a check request, which is due mid-December, uh, in order for that check to be cut in this fiscal year and to fall within the allotted amount of money that was for this year's grant. And then grant statistics, this year we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars available to award. We gave twenty-five grants. So far we've awarded twenty-five grants. Uh, the average amount requested was fourteen thousand five hundred. We do allocate a little bit more than is actually available, because as you'll see under historical averages, annually we have around sixty thousand dollars left over, and that is because some projects, maybe like a parking lot, don't end up happening. Um, sometimes an estimate comes in higher than the final invoice, and so we don't always pay out exactly what we allocate. We have one on the waitlist right now. If it looks like in November, and that's a, that's an application that is complete, it's ready to go, it's been approved, it's ready for a check when there's money. So if it gets to be, you know, the end of November and all of these projects are happening and we are gonna pay out all the money that we allocated, one on the waitlist would be asked to reapply in January, but on average, that never happens. We always, we have zero on the waitlist generally at the end of the year. So more than likely, they will get, they'll get their money.
That lends itself to, uh, what Jenny referenced earlier, which is, you know, a lot of these businesses, they, they get applied, they, they, they start to do it, or they, and they just start getting busy. Business picks up or their, the costs are maybe more than they expected, and so they decide, oh, well, we can't, we can't do that this year, and so they, we reach out to businesses, Carla does a really great job of reaching out to businesses as they've, um, as we see that they have been approved, but they haven't actually followed up on the work yet to see, hey, you know, the time is coming up, you've got a month left for that calendar, are you, are you planning on doing the grant? And sometimes they say yes, sometimes they say no, it came in too expensive or whatever, and then we know we've got extra to, to move to that waitlist.
Chris?
Yeah, one date on the previous slide that I don't see is when it's actually awarded. I see the window closing and then when they have a deadline for work, but it's seven months, the first seven months of the year is just that open window, which is great, but I saw on the next slide then you have four on average that, um, typically pull it. So is there any benefit if we were to maybe shrink the first seven months windows that we could get some of those others that are pulling in, or, I guess, was the first question before I carry on?
Oh, we'll go into this a little bit more, but in general, what we have, what we discussed was that they felt like if you shorten that window, that there might be a lot of projects that aren't able to happen at all during the year. Changing, changing the application window would change the number of projects that are able to happen each year.
To, to be clear too, and, and maybe this is, uh, maybe I'm answering what you're asking, cut my Russell, like, they, uh, if you apply for a business or for your grant in March and you are approved, uh, you'll, you're approved immediately, and then you do the work, and if that project, if that was a piece of equipment that you bought, you can be paid very quickly, um, which is, which is better for those businesses. They've paid the money to buy this equipment, they show the receipts of what they bought and um, and now they're, now they have their, their, their money. So they don't have to wait until
It's concurrent.
End of July, but if they have work they have to do, that, the work has to be completed. So I don't know if that helped answer.
No, it does, and that makes more sense.
Additionally to that, uh, some of these applications are getting pulled, not just because of the scope and timeframe, but they're also being pulled because there's additional information that we're requesting as part of BTAC to say, you know, we need a little bit more clarification on what this is gonna be used for. And so there's some instances where in them going back and having to explain a little bit further, that they pull their application and then it comes through to us in the following year.
And that's, that's a great point. I think one thing that I want to emphasize is, you know, BTAC gets, um, uh, application. They review it through the rubric and it's, it's not complete for various reasons. A lot of times it's, it's maybe the narrative doesn't really explain what they're, what they're gonna use it for, or there's something that they're missing in there. Just because they'll, they'll send it back and say, this is not, this is not appropriate, doesn't mean that it, or didn't, didn't meet the criteria, doesn't mean that it's dead. We then reach out and say, here's why it didn't meet the criteria and try to work with them to get the pro, the application information that maybe was missing in the initial application and so that they can reapply. So it's not like it gets pulled, application comes in April and it, and it doesn't meet the criteria and it doesn't get approved. We had that this year. Um, they came back the following month, I think, and and having worked with our staff and to kind of address why they didn't get approved and then they were able to approve, so.
Another point is that one of the requirements of the work, when you get pre-approved, is that the work has to be started within four months of approval. So if you get approved in January, then you have February, March, April, May to do your, to start your, um, your outdoor project, which is typically like for landscapers would start their busy season. And if you can't find someone that can fit your project in, in that short of a timeframe, then you might miss that window as well. So that's kind of one of the benefits of having a longer application window, is that they do then have until November to get started. And also funds, too. Like, maybe I can't afford it right now, but hopefully by the end of the year I can. And so if I have a little bit more time to apply and to get this done, then I can probably get this project taken care of this year. Okay, so now I'm going to pass it over to Paul, and he's going to talk about the grant review process and their.
Thanks, Jenny. Got it. Before we go ahead, I, I did want to take a few minutes and just firstly commend Jenny and Carla, the entire economic development team on being great stewards of the business. They take such meticulous detail in making sure that this opportunity is available to Thornton area businesses. They go out, they meet the community, they extend every opportunity to them, Carla in particular, with just a tremendous deal of patience to be able to go out and make sure that if there's a business that needs it, and they apply for it, they are given every single opportunity to make that happen. So I very much appreciate the work that you, Adam, and your team does on making that happen. I also want to recognize Council for making this grant available to the business community of Thornton. It's extremely important and extremely vital. And it's not something that's offered in every city in the state, but I do think it's extremely important that we understand that being a partner with the business community is extremely important for the growth of Thornton. That being said.
Did Jenny write those nice comments about her in your script?
You know, I wish I could tell you, I, I left my readers at home, so I can't see anything that's written down. So, that being said, to review why we're here tonight, about ten months ago, Council requested that we take a look at some of the specifics in the grant process. Taking a look at some specific things and gave us the 2025 period to really take a look and have it prepared. So if there were changes that needed to be made for the 2026 grant season, if you were, that we would have that ready to go. Some of those specifics were, as Councilman Russell asked about changing possibly the application period, rather than making it January through July if it needed to be broken up, and taking a look at some of the scoring processes. So some of the things that we did take a look at, as we discussed previously, the, the period, the January through July to review the, the applications, we found that that was really serving businesses the best, that if we made it a shorter window and made it two different windows, what we might end up doing is actually excluding businesses. That if we shortened that period, there might be businesses in the first period that we weren't able to approve, approved businesses in the second period that weren't able to meet the deadline, and then leaving those first businesses out. Also, i- it just, everything really lined up much better. And that was feedback that we got from the entirety of the BTAC community, from people who are business owners themselves, and understand the necessity of being able to get that money in that period of time to be able to get the projects done and be able to get that reimbursement. We also looked at each particular line of the scoring rubric and understood that they all had its, its importance. The scoring really was best leaving as is. There were a few things that we did take a look at and would recommend making some changes to. One of them being currently, a business can apply for for the big grant if they are in business for twelve months and have leased for twelve months. Because of the nature of being allowed to be reimbursed up to twelve months, that was something the Council approved a few years back. What we found that that's enabling some businesses to do is if they've been in business for a year and they can be reimbursed for up to a year, some businesses are taking advantage of, take advantage of that to, in essence, almost use it as startup money, being reimbursed to start their business, which isn't really the nature and spirit of what we are looking for as a business improvement grant. So what we're requesting is that we move that window of eligibility to two years, and again, have that reimbursement being allowed for twelve months back. So a business will be in place for one year and then be able to be reimbursed for those twelve months period back. The, the, the next thing that we're looking at is, right now, businesses are eligible to receive this grant every five years. And we're looking at the current economic climate and seeing just the nature of some of these businesses that have been, that have applied, and we've waited the five years. And those, that five-year period may be a little too long. And businesses are really depending on that for necessary improvements to their business and maintenance to their business. And the five years is causing, i- i- it's causing some hardship to these businesses. And changing that to three years is going to definitely help them out with things like just general maintenance, parking lots, and really things that will affect the overall beauty of the city in general. So we're requesting that that be changed from five to three years. There was another issue brought up, and just to make sure that everybody understands, BTAC members are allowed to receive the grants, but in, since the, the grant is, the inception of the grant, one BTAC member has received that grant while also being a commissioner. The, one actually commissioner received the grant before becoming a commissioner. And there also has been instances where a BTAC member has recused themselves from voting because of a family member having applied for it. So if there's any other direction that Council has, we would be, we'd be open to hearing that.
I'm sorry, Paul, one, one quick point of clarification on that. BTAC members, while there's only been one that's used it when they're currently a commissioner, they can get it, but they cannot vote for it. If, if it's, if they're applying, they are recused from, from voting. The other commissioners would then vote for it. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you did it very well.
Thanks.
So with that, I think, Jenny, it's back to you, with the, the recommendations that BTAC made.
Let, let me, so we do want to get Council's direction on these changes. One other point of clarification, maybe on the, the first bullet there on the licensing time. And one other thing that I think BTAC talked about is they don't review these, they don't review these grants, business plans for these grants like we have in the past when we had the startup grant with, with the ARPA funds. We had business plans that were submitted, it was, and it was reviewed by internal city, city staff. So the, the review process is different, yeah, I'm sorry, it's reviewed by counselors. And so, so review process is different. And so I think the concern was trying to be good stewards of city money, some concern that some of these businesses might use it, and then is a new business, and then not stay open, or, which we've seen some potential of that, and then also, or also sell, you know, sell pretty quickly after. And so just trying to make sure it's the spirit of the grant, I think, is, was, was the conversation that BTAC had. So I just want to provide that clear clarification point.
Should we start with the first one, then?
Please.
Any objection to the recommendation? All right, we're good on the changing it from twelve months to twenty-four months. What about on changing the waiting period from five years to three years? Any objection? Great. And then leaving the application period and the scoring system as is? Any objection?
Look, I'm sorry, there's one thing that we did leave off of, of that, and that's the slide that he talked about before, and I apologize for that direction on, on member eligibility for if you're a BTAC member, could you receive the grant if you recuse yourself?
And the recommendation is to leave it as is?
Yes.
Any objection to that? You guys did a great presentation. Made it very easy.
Well done, Paul.
It was all these guys.
I like having, uh, other people do all the presentations for me, it makes it a lot easier. It's about four words all night. Okay, well, thank you for your time. We will move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have LLA interviews. So as Kristin is getting ready to bring in the applicants, we have a bunch of questions that need to be asked. Do I have volunteers for any of, for these? I can start with the first one and the last one. Number three.
Blue four.
Number six. Seven. Eight.
I'm raising my hand, but I didn't.
Jessica, you have two. Do you want to give one of those to David, so he gets to participate? Do you want one, or do you care?
Everyone, five or seven.
Let's do seven.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is Dwayne Schaefer.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Sorry, we're running a little bit behind, but that's pretty noble for us. We'll do some quick introductions for you, and then we have a list of questions, and then we'll let you ask questions. So I'm Jan Coleman, I'm the mayor.
Jessica Sandberg, Ward two.
Yours, Alice, our Ward one.
This is Martina, Ward one.
Chris Russell, blue four.
Aaron Bigelow, Ward four.
Tony Unright, Ward three, and that's David Coto, Ward three.
We ran in the restroom, and then Robert Iola from Ward two is online.
Perfect. I see all the names, so I can.
Makes it a little easier for you. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this role?
Uh, well, I've been a resident of Thornton for the last eight years. I have experience in business and property management. I'm a veteran. And thirty-five years of experience in corporate telecom. I'm interested in this opportunity and serving, because I see the opportunity to contribute, you know, give back to the community, also expand my personal network. And then better understand local government operations, you know. I've worked in corporate for the thirty-five years, so I know there's differences. I, you know, I've worked closely with the fed, federal government, on, on different orders and different situations. So I'm very interested to compare. And not only do I have thirty-five years of experience in that area, but also have twenty-five plus years of leadership experience. So I believe that aligns with what's needed and expected, you know, as far as experience with the. And, and I'll, and I'll just add on just a little bit more. You know, in my professional career, I've had the opportunity and responsibility to provide and manage services for large federal agencies. So, you know, when it comes to that, the expectations of accountability, professionalism, fairness, and definitely the adherence to strict compliance, you know, were essential and expected in that area.
Have you had the opportunity to attend an authority meeting or speak to any of the members on the authority about it, or anyone on Council?
So before this, I did go back and pull past agendas and meeting minutes, so I could better understand the cadence and focus areas of the authority. While I haven't attended any meetings in person, I've worked to take a look at and work to understand the common issues that come in with regards to renewals and, you know, initial requests and transfers, and also public input and protests that may occur. So, and I get to say, over this past week, that I have reached out and did speak with a couple of people. Chris gave me some input there. I was waiting for Jessica to come back, and I did, you know, reach out to her, and I just had a good conversation of someone else in my neighborhood, Randy Sucks. Well, I didn't know he was on the Planning Commission, I knew he was involved, but we had a chance to talk up there as well.
Great.
So please, tell us how you would go about ensuring that all members of the authority, that their voice is heard.
Well, the first thing you want to do is listen and then speak. In my business and leadership experience, I learned that every voice matters, every voice counts. It's, if you really want to have diverse input, knowledge, perspectives. So I would, if I can, if I see that someone isn't participating or speaking up, I would encourage, encourage them to, you know, give their perspective, even if I have to pull them on the side. If it was a situation where it looked like they were just not able to insert themselves, then I would find a way to break that and allow them to speak up.
What is the most important skill you believe a member of this authority should possess?
Impartial judgment. And I, I say that because in this, in this position, you really have to remove, separate, remove emotions, feelings, personal beliefs, personal preferences, and from the law and evidence. They don't, they don't mix, you know. You really need to make sure that the community understands that these decisions were based on law and evidence, not opinions. So being able to separate that is critical. Thank you.
Jessica. All right, if you're appointed to this board, what would you like to see this authority accomplish, and do you have any specific goals?
So I'd like to see the continuation of transparency, communication as it pertains to the community and the community being able to understand what's happening behind closed doors here. I think it's very important that the community, it's simplified for the community, you know, how do you find the information? How are decisions made? You know, what's the, the process behind it? And I personally, you know, Thornton is a very large city. And, you know, how do you bring more people to the table to be involved in this? So I think, you know, even with this authority, it's, it's critical that people understand the whys behind the decision-making process, and, you know, how can they get involved? You know, even putting that in layman's terms or simplifying that, I think that would be a good project and goal to attain.
A little bit about any other authorities, boards, or commissions you may have served on, and how that experience is pertinent to serving on this authority?
I have not had the opportunities to serve on a municipal authority. But, you know, across my, you know, professional career, I've had the opportunity to participate in many, 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 many cross-functional projects and committees during that time. And this is, you know, during the, the very. And this is, you know, during the various roles, being able to work on complex issues, complex problems, whether it's at the team, the organization and business level, and coming to a consensus to resolve those issues. So although I don't have board experience, nor, you know, the experience with, you know, local government, I spent a great amount of time in corporate, understanding its processes.
How do you prepare for a meeting in which you will be faced with making a decision that could impact a business financially?
Being prepared, I think, is, is critical. Over the years, I've managed various multimillion dollar projects, proposals, contracts, and made decisions, critical decisions that were critical to operations, budget decisions and impacting personnel. So, you know, when you have something that you're working on in that respect, the first thing, the first thing that you need to do is understand the ask, understand the expectations. Then you need to review any and all input that you receive, whether in this case it's evidence, whether it's facts, any information that you have at hand. Beyond that is the pursuit of any additional data that you can collect. You know, in business, it was all about reporting and analysis and digging into the data and bringing that to the table. I would assume something similar on this side. And then once you have all your details, then it's time to pull everything together into a concise summary or presentation that you can present to your stakeholders, so they understand absolutely the details and the reasoning why you made those decisions.
How comfortable are you approving something that you disagree with?
Been on both sides of that, whether it's approving something that I disagreed with or proving something that someone else disagreed with. But as far as approving, you know, being comfortable, you know, over the years and, you know, in my career, you know, you're forced to make those decisions, whether it's, you know, it's a network outage or, you know, business decision. Everybody's not going to be happy with those decisions. So, and I, you know, you have to understand that some of those are, you know, by the organization or by the business, so as a leader, I had to support those decisions. You know, I had to be professional. Sometimes it was very difficult, especially when it impacted personnel. So being supportive, being able to communicate that back to your staff or, in this instance, the community is critical, but you, you have to keep that sense of mind and and be able to communicate that. It's, you know, again, and I've seen it here. Not everybody's going to be comfortable or happy with decisions, so I can be impartial in that case.
Well, we've come to the end of the questions, so I always end it with, do you have any questions for us?
I do. Let me, let me pull a few questions out here. So how does the city envision the authority's role evolving as Thornton continues to grow?
That's a really good question. I think there's a combination and other council members can, and can jump on too, but a lot of what this group does is driven by state regulations. And so how do we get more of a partnership with the state when regulations change or they want to make changes that would impact us as a city? That'd be really interesting to hear from our authority on where we could be more proactive with that. What about you all? What do you think?
I was gonna say the same thing, along the lines of, we have to follow the law, the state, so what the, what local licensing authority can do is limited by that. But I do think this entity is a great opportunity for co-governance, where you empower local residents to, you know, make meaningful decisions that impact their community. So with that regard, I think this council and most likely future councils will always be supportive of that and want to make sure that you have all the decisions, all the, all the information that you need to make the right decision. So I think that's where the city can, you know, improve in terms of providing better service to you as citizen board members, giving you more timely information or, you know, just trying to help answer your questions so you can make the best decision possible.
And I guess add on, based on what you said, are there opportunities to influence the lawmakers?
Yeah. You, you can always, as a citizen, call your lawmaker up and tell them how you feel. The city has more formal lobbying capacity. Oh, there's a lot of different areas to, to go, so I think the challenge is we've got limited time and resources, what do we, what do we advocate for?
Right.
Council has a lot of decisions to make every year on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Just to add to that, I think over the years, the local licensing authority has had to deal with some situations in parts of our city that maybe bad actors were causing problem. And so you see sometimes how those situations can influence policies that we do put out and, and change as we grow. So I think as we grow, we, we're gonna see growth in different directions, new businesses coming in, different types of businesses that will need different licensing, but I know that we've really relied on some of the authority and decision-making there to help us understand how we can make better policies. So some of those bad players aren't all in one area, or if they are in an area, how can we, what are the steps we can do to either move them out or spread them out?
You know, that was something that was really needs, desires, evidence, being able to leverage all that information. Okay, another question I had is what training or orientation is provided to help new members understand quasi judicial process? Somebody coming on board, like me.
So we have tasked staff with creating an onboarding process for all of our boards and commissions. So Kristen can actually answer that in more detail, because our staff is responsible for that, so.
Yes, we do have staff liaisons and the city attorney's office that meet with new board members to go over all of the duties and responsibilities and everything that a new member needs to know before they start.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And one last question. What are the most common issues or misconceptions residents have about the liquor licensing process?
I think you've heard some of that from us tonight, is that the state laws are really what drive what we can and cannot do, and that leads to a lot of frustrations on the resident level, because if they don't want a location in a certain area, but the state says there's nothing that we can do to say no to, figuring out ways to communicate that is going to be really important.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for us?
No, anything else for me?
Well, thank you for spending some time with us this evening. Thank you for letting us get a little bit long and very much appreciate it. We should decide tonight and let you know here shortly.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, take care.
Mayor and Council, this is Jeremy Black.
Hi. I'll let you take the hot seat right in the middle there. Well, thank you for spending some time with us. Apologize for running a little bit late tonight.
That's fine, I understand.
And we're gonna do some quick introductions for you and then we have a list of questions. So I'm Jan Coleman, I'm the mayor.
Dave DeCundo, Ward three.
Tony Unright, Ward three.
Erin Bigelow, Ward four.
Chris Russell, Ward four.
Justin Martinez, Ward one.
Jeres Salazar, Ward one.
Jessica Sandberg, Ward two.
And we actually have Roberta Yala online, Ward two. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, why you're interested in this role and what experience you bring to it?
So Colorado native, grew up in South Park, Colorado. Kind of been all over the states. I travel international quite a bit. I do a lot of things outside the country. Juke scuba diving is a fun fact, so. Get a lot of unique perspectives going out about learning from a bunch of different cultures, environments and whatnot. Professionally, I am an executive for public safety in Northern Colorado. Wanted that job, you know, not only running department operations, but I am actually part of the chain command in regards to localizing authority in our town itself as well. A lot of that involves more of taking the fact finding from the street, moving that back into a lot of the work production, both on the marijuana and liquor side for our city board as well. And so working through that, I'm very familiar with a lot of the processes that would be involved in local licensing authority. I'm interested in this appointment. I just recently moved within the last two years toward four. Want to do my part in a different environment, kind of see what's involved in the metro area down here. Frankly, trying to maybe break in down here in public safety as well, and I figured this might be a good start to kind of get back to the community in which I'm operating currently, living. And some other expertise and experiences. Having to present to the boards, I have a lot of background with being able to bring ideas, other concepts, programs. A lot of times often, you know, issues that we have to bring up in the public safety avenue, we can talk to the boards. I have a lot of experience with the quorum and some of the processes that might be involved in a body such as that.
Thank you. Karen?
Great. Have you had a chance to either attend one of the authority meetings or talk to anybody from the authority or anybody on council about this position?
This was kind of a shotgun start as far as the local licensing authority, so I just happened to see this just on a whim and it closed fairly quickly. I have had attended previous sessions before for the board itself. I did go to one planning session and was able to see that when it was being offered online.
Justin?
Yeah, please tell us how you'd go about ensuring that all members of the authority have their voices heard.
Knowing personalities, knowing who is on the board is a huge part of that. So some folks might be more willing to offer up their opinion as opposed to others. And so knowing who you're working with, what their preferences are, and how they might conduct business is a big piece of that. Knowing someone that might be a little bit more introverted, they might not be as willing to give their opinion as someone that, you know, is a type A personality, a little bit more extroverted. So being aware of how people interact with each other is a huge piece of that. Giving people the floor, having professional discourse. Adversarial discussion is great as long as it's done professionally and that you are trying to meet the objective that you're setting up to in the first place. And so making sure that people have their opportunity to say their piece and giving the floor to them, and then being respectful of the time given to them as well, not to override each other. That's a huge aspect of that.
Tony?
What's the most important skill you believe a, a member of the authority could possess?
Communication's a huge piece of that. There's several skills I would like a person to have, but I think communication, effective communication and awareness. Being able to voice your opinion professionally within the guardrails of what you're trying to fact find or whatever the base circumstance may be. In the case of local licenses authority, you may be making decisions about licensing to take to the board. There might be issues that might come up where there's a suspension or revocation that might be in line. Being able to effectively understand the statute and communicate that to whoever that is supposed to go to. And frankly, communicating with the person that might have that license itself. Making sure that they are heard and that you are understanding what they are putting forward, as well as any other officials that might be involved as well. And just being able to relay those ideas and then take feedback as well. Thank you.
Jessica?
If you're appointed to this authority, what would you like to see the authority accomplish and do you have any specific goals?
Community safekeeping is a big piece with this. There's that crux between financial wellness of the city, financial wellness of the individuals that possess those licenses, but we also have a sometimes community caretaking, safekeeping and wellness piece we need to look at. Not everyone operates their business on the same level. Not everyone, you know, may follow the goals, as to be expected. And so during that tenure, I would like to see, you know, with my piece in there, that we are consistent, we're fair and we're firm. And that every expectation for licensing issuance or, you know, whatever recommendations we make are within the guidelines of law and common sense and safe to practice for the city.
Jeres?
Tell us a little bit about any other authorities, boards or commissions you may have served on and how the experience is pertinent to serving on this authority?
I currently serve, at least in the public safety realm, on a it's our local authority as far as, CACP is the Colorado Association Chief of Police, that's for the state. I serve on one locally for Well County itself. I've held basically what would be treasurer, vice president and president prior to that. A lot of that was educational, bringing new ideas, new technology, new concepts to chief of police for the local environment in Well County. I've also served on a nine-one-one commission, served with communications board as well for Well County dispatch. And so working within those boards, that's all, you know, bringing ideas, giving new concepts, new platforms for the commissioners, you know, for what they may have to vote on. Budget concerns is a big piece of that. With Well County, it's also, you know, changes and fluctuation and trend lines in public safety for Northern Colorado. So a lot, big piece of that is awareness. And how that not only affects our teams, but how that can affect the county at large amongst all of our jurisdictional populations. Because what may be good for Greeley may not work for years, you know, based on the populace. Or, you know, what we happen to see just in the local environment, so. I've also served a couple of boards with churches, with Hope Kids currently. That is more of a kind of caretaking role, just with finances, some of the programming, some of the other circumstances that come up with that outreach group for disabled children. And a lot of it's just making sure that we're acting in a good authority based on resources, programming and other things that make sense for that group and that demographic. I think it's pertinent to serving on this authority. The quorum is a big piece of that, understanding how some of these bodies work together. How that communication has to take place under different types of environments. Understanding the messaging that's going back to whoever the end relay is on that. What may be happening on five oh three might be different than what we're giving out to Well County commissioners, so. There's similarities, but there's also differences in knowing the audience and whoever's on the backend of that is really important, so.
How do you prepare for a meeting in which you'd be faced with making a decision that could impact a business financially?
So there's a crux, anytime there's licensing. My preparation would involve fact finding, if there's reports or any other, you know, factors that might be specific to an incident. Making sure that we have that information available and that we have that at our fingertips, so we can do a little pre-research about what may be taking place. Understanding the statute as it may pertain to the issue we may be acting with. Not only is there a state, but local licensing model. Not only is there a state, but local licensing might also have factors as well that might be different, you know, from state in some regards. Usually more restricted, could be potentially more restrictive depending on the setting. And so, making sure we understand how code, statute sometimes process with the city may affect that decision. And still understanding that it comes back to the safety and wellness of the community and the city at large. So yes, it's difficult, but if a financial decision is causing people to be hurt, or bad process, or they're not following the expectations, sometimes preparation with that, we just have to make those decisions, and they're unfortunate. So.
Chris?
How comfortable are you approving something that you disagree with?
As long as we have professional discourse, we may not always agree on everything, but once a decision is rendered, it should be, and I know it's easy, I'm talking to each of you as, you know, a member of the board. But once a decision's rendered, it's, you know, one board, one voice. I know that's a perfect pipe, you know, pipe dream sometimes. But I feel that once the decision's made at large, everyone gets their vote, yea or nay. You know, we may disagree, you can lodge your disagreement, and then from there, business has to continue. And so, as far as my being comfortable with a decision I disagree with, as long as I can say my piece, it's, you know, I'm able to be heard, and if it's a vote yea or nay, and I can lodge my vote the way it is, you know, it's the will of the board at that point. And someone may have a different perspective than me. And so, you know, sometimes that happens.
Well, you made it to the end of the questions.
Probably a little bit quicker than should have, but.
No, no. Do you have any questions for us?
More of it's just understand procedure. You know, if I was being able to be given the opportunity for this, some of that's on the job training. And I understand that. Having some of the experience with some of the boards in the past, I don't want to assume anything, but I figure that there might be some similarities. And so, more of it's just learning about the local environment, a little bit closer than obviously Northern Colorado, and I know metro's a lot different. So I definitely look forward to the opportunity. As far as questions, I don't at this time. So appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for spending some time with us this evening. We should decide something tonight and be able to get back to you pretty quickly.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
And the last applicant, Thomas Grego, he withdrew his application. So that was the last person.
Okay. All right, so we have two options. This is Ward four. One, does Ward four want to give their thoughts first?
So, some of the notes that I have here for Julie, he gave very articulating answers, he has a very solid professional background. He did take, you know, a moment to call, and just, I think he reached out to you. So I was like, all right, well, you're earning brownie points there. But overall, I think they're both great candidates. Jeremy's professional police background, I think, is also very relative to this positioning, gives him a vast experience in various boards too. So you know, those are just the notes that I was able to take from them, but I think they're both very good candidates. So I'll let you speak.
I really liked both of them. Dwayne's really passionate about getting involved in our community. But I would have to say I really liked Jeremy's background and experience. I think it's, that's a tough call. They're both really strong candidates.
I agree. They're both really good. It's a nice problem to have.
Yep.
Other thoughts?
I'm totally biased for Dwayne because he is like, he's out there everywhere. That guy is everywhere. And he is very, very involved in the community as much as he can be. So it's nice to see a new face coming in. I think that Jeremy also has a very good background. But it would be, I think it'd be a great opportunity for Dwayne, just knowing what he he's a very personal individual and gets along with everybody in the community.
Justin?
Yeah, I would. My preferred candidate is Dwayne. I think Dwayne had a lot of solid pros that we all mentioned. I hesitate for Jeremy because the, his background is very impressive, but I'm a little concerned that he might be too much of an insider. And use, and use the advice of how things are done up in Well County. And I think that we don't necessarily want to have, I think our boards should really be spannably oriented, and so that's why I lean towards Dwayne.
Others?
My preference would go with Jeremy. I think that he answered all of the information that I was looking for, and I guess I think he has a pretty diverse background that was helpful for me to, to bring those things in, plus a bit of experience in the liquor and licensing area that we spoke of. So that would be my preference.
Cher, Dave?
My preference would be for Jerry.
Cher?
I agree with Justin. Both of them were really strong candidates, which is a rough decision, but it's I like that Dwayne is more
We got Roberta too.
Yeah, I will, I will also go with Dwayne.
I would go with Dwayne.
I like.
I like both too.
I'd say Dwayne for this one. I would, I think Justin brought up a really good point, just his background in police, maybe it is too geared to something like this, and to help him broaden, or maybe if he was involved, like planning commission or something that's outside of law enforcement, because I think he's very well spoken, he's a smart guy for sure. But putting him instead of something that's so closely related to police business, then maybe he would grow a bit better in another area where he doesn't maybe overwhelm the rest of the authority with, well, I know this because this is, you know, what I do professionally, and I like to see the community involvement of the average citizens. And in the conversation with Dwayne, I know that he recently retired, and he's looking for passion, and it is actually community involvement from the conversation we have. So I want to encourage that behavior and see more of that with other residents that find themselves with more time and then investing in our community. And I think that's also a really strong point for him. So in the end, I'll be a time, I would go with Dwayne, just for those reasons.
It looks like we have consensus, but I'll, I agree with you. I think Dwayne would be a great fit for this. The only thing I worry about on Jeremy in particular is if he would be be expected to be the expert for the rest of the board, and making sure that they each have an equal voice, instead of relying on him to be that expert. But if we have other board positions, we should encourage him to apply, or any of those openings that we have. But it looks like we have consensus for Dwayne.
All right, let's take a quick break and then come back for the next item.
Dwayne's a good ping pong player. This is a pretty routine item, but I'm going to give it to Kristen, and she'll walk you through what we've anticipated for next year. There are a couple places, you'll see that we've left a little bit of ambiguity for discussion, and so she'll point those pieces out.
So we are going to go through the proposed 2026 agenda, or calendar. And so, as all of you know, the first and third Tuesdays are generally the planning session days, and the second and fourth Tuesdays are council meeting days. So in January, we have the typical month here, and then also in February, we are looking to have the strategic planning conference on either January 30th and 31st, or February 20th and 21st. So if you're looking for your direction on which of those two days council would like to proceed with. In March, we have five Tuesdays, but the third Tuesday is the NLC conference. So we're, we are proposing that the third and the 24th be planning sessions, and the 10th and the 31st be council meetings. And that's to keep the rhythm of every other meeting being a council meeting or planning session. In April and May, those are typical months. In June, again, we have five Tuesdays, but the 23rd is CML conference, so we wouldn't have a meeting on that day. And the 30th is the primary election day, and generally, we don't have a meeting on that day. July would be a typical month. And then in August, on August 4th, we have National Night Out, so we would not have a meeting on that Tuesday. In September, we have five Tuesdays. We are proposing that September 1st be a planning session, and then September 8th and 22nd be regular council meetings. And then the 15th and the 29th, so those will be planning sessions, but devoted solely to going through the 2027 budget review. Is what we would be proposing for September. October would be the normal month. In November, on the 3rd is the general election. We wouldn't have a meeting on that Tuesday. And then the 24th is the week of Thanksgiving, and so we would propose not having a meeting on that week. Then in December, we would propose having the council meetings on the 1st and 15th, and a planning session on the 8th. And then not having a council meeting or planning session on the 22nd or the 29th because of the holidays. And so with that, I would take any questions and your feedback, and then we are specifically looking for council's direction on the strategic planning conference, which set of dates you would like to proceed with.
That one, we might have to wait till the next, the election to make sure we have three others that can participate.
I will bring in some additional attention to that week of November 7th, the meeting on November 17th.
Yeah, I had a question about that too.
Yeah, that is the week of the NLC conference. We, we know sometimes that is impacted by travel. So we depicted that, but thought that would be something the council would want to discuss further.
Chris?
I was going to weigh in on preference for the planning, strategic plan conference, and mine was going to be January, but you did bring up a good point. Given the new council, it's highly beneficial for them to be able to participate. So I think regardless of what we decide tonight, that's going to be tentative.
And we could do a tentative and then confirm with the new council when they're in.
Or we just make the decision and tell them welcome to the roster.
That's how he's always done it, so.
I'll ask Dave, since Tony won't be here for it. You don't have a preference? I think either of those works. But Roberta, what about you?
Yeah.
Roberta, can you hear me? Is she muted?
I think she's still on, but muted.
Okay. So I guess tentatively, it sounds like the 30th and 31st might work, but we'll confirm it with the, with the new council as well. And then, can we talk about the 17th a little bit? Because I know the federal advocacy committees meet usually either Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning for, for NLC fall meeting. And I know several of us are members of those federal advocacy committees, so it might be, that might be one we need to pull off. That's something that November. Because that's the week of the fall NLC meeting.
Yeah, we should definitely.
I mean, because I know this year, they're on Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday morning.
But not last year, they were, it was like.
That's right, and they were later in the week. So should we leave it on for now and then just try it later, or should we just take it off now and plan for that fee? Just take it off? I'm good with taking it off. That way, we're not confusing people. We can add it later if we need an extra session.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Is that all right, Chris? Dave?
Yeah, I mean, we don't know that schedule, so.
Right. Take it on for now, but have it as a floater in case we need it later, and it's the schedule comes out differently.
All right. We just know that we'll revisit it.
All right.
Great, thank you. And the resolution formally adopting the schedule will come back next week.
Great, thank you. All right, next is determining who's going to cast votes for NLC.
Speaking of NLC, Council Policy 4.3 requires that you all identify who's going to be the voting member and alternate at the NLC business meeting. That is scheduled on Saturday. I believe it's Saturday afternoon. The folks I have attending, according to our records, are Mary Coleman, Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Salazar, Councilmember Ayala, Councilmember Sangren, Councilmember Kudon, and Councilmember Russell. So we just need to identify a primary and alternate to cast a vote, so we'll bring it forward in a resolution, just summarizing that.
I don't mind doing it. I did it last year, and for those who haven't done it, it's kind of a long meeting.
It's so exciting and informative.
But actually, okay, we'll do it again. So unless anybody really wants to do it, it's basically, what is kind of cool is you get to say with your state, and then like, it's kind of like a little mini, I don't know, convention, and then vote on a couple of things, then it's kind of like
Was it contagious?
There's no, there's nothing to debate. It's just like, okay, here's the person that we're bringing on, and they go through this whole vetting process to get through the nomination committee to be the next person who's in line for NLC execs. So it's not like that exciting. I'd be happy to do it again.
I'm happy with you doing it again. Anybody else?
We just need.
We need an alternate too?
I don't mind taking the alternate, but I won't be there Saturday. We actually Friday afternoon.
I should have an alternate that's going to be there Saturday.
Yeah.
Is anyone else going to be there Saturday afternoon?
Roberta says she can't hear. I'll text her. It doesn't appear that we have technical issues, so.
Could be on her end.
Must be your end.
Yeah, it is kind of late on Saturday. Is anybody else going to be there?
I'm not.
No.
It's just you, so we are putting all of our eggs in your basket, Justin.
Well, I've already booked my flight to leave on Sunday.
Okay.
I think your policy says as appropriate. I think the intent is to have somebody in case something were to happen.
I can do it as a backup, sir. I'm leaving on Sunday too.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Cher will be our backup.
Yep. It's nice to see the incoming president, that whole changing of the guard thing, if you're sitting in there.
All right, well, that made it easy.
Thank you.
All right, rules of order.
So again, this is a follow-up. Thanks. We've gotten several points of feedback. And this is really just a discussion about how you may wish to amend your rules of order going forward. Just a reminder for history, some of this, the recommendations have come from a review of staff thinking about safety of meetings. The first part of these recommendations are really things that staff has asked for consideration.
Yes, thank you. So we are going to go through a summary and background of the rules of order procedure, talk about potential changes, and have discussion, receive feedback and direction, and then I'll provide next steps. So first, just to provide a summary of and background of what the rules of order procedure do and the purpose. They are to provide for orderly and efficient meetings. They are to provide for fairness and equal participation among all of the members. Provide for legal and procedural compliance with the charter, city code, and state statutes. If I, I will have professionalism and decorum, and the opportunity for council to hear from community members. So the rules of order and procedure are structured in a way that provide for general rules that include the council participation, legislative process and voting, the structure of the agenda and minutes, and rules for enforcement. And then there are the order of the business, and then the regular meeting procedures, which goes into more detail of each of the Of each of the, uh, order of business. And so while we were putting these recommendations together and looking at our rules of order, they conduct a survey of other cities to determine best practices. So the list of those cer- uh, cities that we looked at are listed there. The first. The first two changes that we are recommending are that handouts be handed directly to staff and not to council. So it is not currently addressed in council's rules of order and procedure. And largely, it is not addressed in other cities' rules of order and procedure, however, we are recommending that this be specifically included. For safety reasons and clarity. Also, public comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual members or to other audience members. Again, it's not addressed in our rules of order and procedure, and largely not addressed in other cities' rules of or- order and procedure. Again, we are recommending that it be specifically stated in council's rules, so that it is clear and for safety reasons. So I will pause on these two, just to get your feedback and direction on these before proceeding.
Any objections, Chris?
Just a question, then, so with the public comment being directed as a council poll or the chair. A lot of times we'll see residents come in and during public comment, they wanna do some level of appreciation, or maybe they're speaking to Tony specifically. For his support of the fire, humor, specific examples like that, so, um. I think that might get lost when, you know, yes, we are one body, but at the same time, we do individual work in a lot of different areas. And those comments sometimes are directed to the council member in supporter appreciation, and I wouldn't want to see that get lost because. That's someone's personal time, their commitment to come in and try to do a thank you or recognition for something that they felt was above and beyond. In certain of those categories, so I don't necessarily. Like that one as its entirety, because I think we lose all of that, and I know there's some problem in public comments, but I don't, I don't think that's. The majority overwhelming amount in those public.
What was, wow. For number one, what is the. Issue with getting handouts directly from people, I, I'm not.
It's a safety issue.
So like, safety as in.
Because they can't approach us on the dais, so if they have something they want to hand out, they hand it to the city manager and the clerk, who then hands it to us, which is the practice we've been following.
All right, so, yeah, I guess I thought that was the rule, I guess it's. Never giving me anything except for, uh, now you gave out candy many years.
Last year.
I think it just.
I think it just gives the opportunity of somebody to already leave the, the podium and start to approach, it would give. Uh, an ability under the rules of order to ask the person to go back to the podium. And so it just gives a nu- a new management tool.
And I think the other reason is maybe so that the clerk definitely gets copy of whatever, uh, citizen is giving us, and. It can be a part of the record if necessary, if it's a hearing, et cetera.
Okay, and then, yeah, for number two, I don't, I don't think you. I don't think we need to change it, um.
What about saying in general, comments should be directed, not requiring it, not mandating it, but then if someone goes off on a tirade. Gives us the op- ability to kind of bring him back to say, let's focus our comments on in general.
I don't really see how we can ever get anybody to do that, if it's just thirty-three minutes of whatever they want. If they start going off on an F-bomb tirade, what difference does it make if it's towards me?
Or the whole council, that's a good point.
I do wanna bring attention in this recommendation that part of it was, we have had some. Members of public comment speaking to members in the audience, and so I think there was. Um, so that there's two parts of this recommendation, one that, um, comments should be addressed. Understand the feedback that's been given about, um, things addressed to individual council members. But I think there has been, uh, I think there was an observation from the staff that reviewed this. That the staff doesn't want to get in between, cross-talk between members in the audience and people at public comment, and so I think. That, um, if I recall the rationale a little bit, to, uh, discourage. Comments about people in the audience, it was really so that s- staff doesn't get in the middle of and.
So what if we just remove as a whole, and just say direct towards council? Move as a whole, and that way.
Yeah, or we could say, or members of the council only. Also not staff, honestly, I don't think they should be. Yeah, I remember they used to. Now I'm having flashbacks of Mac going after Kevin, and I, that made everybody uncomfortable on. And then he was like, what is, he's, that's not his job, is, our job is the one to take the comments, you have my opinion, but, um. So if it, it, if we wanted to change it, it makes sense if it was like members of council only, or specifically saying not staff, not audience, just the council. That way you could.
Your time to speak to council.
Yeah.
Not the members of the audience.
Is that clear enough?
Yeah, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next consideration, uh, conversations and other disruptions from the audience. So again, not addressed in our rules of order and procedure, all other cities that we reviewed do have some requirement for orderly meetings. And we do have that as well, um, some are, go into greater detail than others, and some have a process for enforcement. So our recommendation would be to include it in our rules of order and procedure, that conversations between audience members. Staff and council members and other audience members must be moved to outside the chambers. And then add a process for enforcement that would include a warning and adjourning the meeting, clearing the room, um, and. If necessary, police enforcement. So yeah, I'll kind of stop here and receive feedback on that.
I think that's so fair, it, it drives me absolutely crazy, so distracting.
Oh, you can hear everything where I'm sitting too, it echoes right where I'm sitting, I hear everybody's whispers. I think that'd be great.
Great, thank you. The next item is sign.
I just have a question about the last one.
Go ahead, Roberta.
Um, you know, I think I agree with it, I just would want to make sure it's even-handedly like enforced to. Any member of the audience that's being disruptive, like, I know that sounds. Kind of like, I, I guess I just worry about enforcement with a lot of this stuff and making sure it's even-handed to like. You know, even if elected officials happen to be just jabbering in the, in the, uh. Uh, you know, um, audience over there.
I agree, and I think that council can do a point of order if needed to help if I'm not, or the whoever the chair is, isn't enforcing it. Or maybe I missed something, and if you can hear something that I can't, on the s- edge, you can say, you're on, it's distracting, we can do a warning.
All right, so moving on to sign regulations, again, uh, not addressed in our rules of order and procedure. And many, many cities do not address it in their rules either, um, some do prohibit signs altogether, and then some have, uh, regulations in place. So the recommendation would be to put regulations in place, and these regulations would actually follow the same as Fort Collins. And that would be to not allow signs larger than eleven by seventeen, with require the signs be held directly in front of one's body. And not be waved, or, um, have more than one person holding it at a time, left unattended, a cha- attached to sticks or poles. Or used to disrupt the orderly conduct of business. And again, that's all for safety reasons, uh, the alternative to that would be to prohibit signs altogether.
At a minimum, I'd go with the recommendation. I mean prohibiting signs are just gonna make T-shirts that say whatever they want to say, so.
Has there ever been a time when signs have been around?
Yes.
Was it helpful for the conversation?
It was not.
But can they be waved up top? You could designate an area at the back of the room, some have done that. Yeah, for days that we made it up top.
I thought this was already an option.
We unofficially made it a rule before, but we, it's not written down anywhere. Any objection to that?
And moving on to circumstances for fully virtual meetings. So in our rules of order and procedure, the city manager in consultation with the mayor can determine that a meeting in person is not practical or prudent. Because of health, weather and other emergency affecting the city. Several other cities do not address fully virtual meetings, or only allow them during defined emergencies or disruptions. Um, there is one city that allows fully virtual meetings for good cause, and it has to be done by motion at a prior meeting. So our recommendation for this would be to expand the ability for the city manager in consultation with the mayor. To shift to a fully virtual meeting for other circumstances that are related to safety. That are beyond just health, weather and other emergencies affecting the city. So then an alternative to that would be in addition to expanding it for other safety concerns. Uh, allowing for virtual meetings based on, um. For any reason, uh, that is not related to safety, and that would be by a majority vote of the council. So if council decided that it would just be better, more convenient for the meeting to be virtual, but there's no specific safety reason for it. By a majority vote of council, they could do that. And then another alternative would be to not make any changes to virtual meetings.
Chris?
Question, what other related safety measure beyond health, weather, emergency affecting the city, like what?
Right, so we're thinking something that, um, would be maybe police department gets wind of. Uh, a threat at a council meeting, so that's not affecting the city as a whole, but it's affecting like a council meeting, safety of those that are attending the meeting, that kind of thing.
A couple of cities have had to do that recently, based on disruptions and council meetings in order to be able to have business.
I mean, I, I agree, a threat is also a threat to your health, so, I mean.
It's just clarity, right? The only other thing I could think of is, well, I like the recommendation, if we add, uh. Any reason by a majority vote, I think would also be beneficial, only because I'm thinking back to the November seventeenth meeting, if we were all at NLC. Other cities do a hundred percent virtual meetings while they're at conferences, because I remember in Tampa last year, a couple of cities had fully virtual meetings. Because they needed to have one, and were able to go back to their hotel rooms and do it, and so that gives us the opportunity to add a virtual meeting for those kind of situations. If needed, but that, I would agree, would need to be a vote of council, not a mayor decision.
So back during COVID, how did the council decide to have your meetings virtually?
There was a conversation, Tammy, you probably.
And I also think a resolution was adopted.
For an emergency situation.
Virtual meetings, given the emergency.
What, did you have to meet in person to adopt the resolution?
We did not.
No. I think, I wasn't here, but they were doing it informally, is how I understand, they decided to meet virtually, and then, um, at the first or.
City manager declared an emergency in the city, which allowed us to meet virtually.
So there was a. The city manager declared the emergency.
It was ratified by council at a later.
We were actually in DC.
We had a virtual meeting there to go through that.
And my, my understanding is really the rules of order and procedure didn't address virtual meetings or.
At all.
Until COVID, and so this, all of, all of this language around virtual participation has been added formally into your. Rules and order and procedure since COVID.
I'm somewhat o- okay with the recommendation, because that's an emergency or safety, and there's some, something is going on. In that regard, I don't want to leave it open to where it's. Although of the majority to start taking meetings virtually, because we're not talking, even now, we're talking in the years down the road. Makeups of councils will change, and then now there's this ability to leverage virtual meetings, because. You know, however the makeup of the council changes, so what the decision we're making today, albeit I don't think it's a problem, I think all of us are pretty good about. You know, making meetings, or if we have to be virtual for whatever reason. I don't like leaving that door open for council ten, twenty years from now, and then they're just like, virtual, virtual, virtual. Majority of council, and they just don't want to come in person, and we just don't know who that is in the future, so.
We could always do a resolution specifically for a situation if it came up for like that conference, right? That we decided to do a virtual meeting instead.
Yeah, there's specifically something going on that we all have a conflict with, and we can make that change, just like we did during COVID, it sounds like. Why leave it open, just, you know, a bunch of lazy council members not wanting to show up?
Correct, yeah, I mean, you can always quote override your rules or make a decision by resolution or motions.
Justin?
I would prefer alternative B, make no changes.
I feel like we need to have the option, if there's a situation that we need to be able to go fully virtual for those specific reasons, safety, health, weather, or other emergencies.
B is pretty much that, in my opinion, because it has to be an emergency in which the city manager, so.
If we, if we were to deal with COVID, the rules that we have now.
That was a pandemic that affected the entire world, so that's a little bit different than a city manager deciding, well, the weather's bad, I'm gonna call it an emergency and make us go virtual. Or there's a threat at city hall, I'm gonna call it an emergency and make us go virtual, it feels. It puts a lot on the city manager to do that instead of consultation.
And I guess a little bit here, just at least if, if there isn't a change here, I think at least making there, there's a really clear direction. On the record, and so I, I do think that gap, that staff potentially anticipated here is, and I think. I remember who mentioned this, so there, there have been some cases around the country where civil unrest kinds of. Environments have started to evolve in meetings, and conflict was having, happening amongst. Members of the individuals in the meetings, and, uh, one of the strategies some cities have used to disrupt. That, uh, disruption is to, to move things, the virtual meetings to allow some of that. To, um, to dissipate a little bit, so. And I would, I would just say, from my perspective, I don't know that the current definition really would facilitate. Um, a, a decision and, and that kind of circumstance, and there's always the, the, the circumstance, if, if we feel things are getting heated and there's too risk. Too much risk, we, we might just cancel or postpone a meeting.
Yeah, we could adjourn the meeting.
We're talking. Oh, go ahead, Roberta.
What if it were, um, I was just trying to think of the language here, like. Safety, instead of saying like other circumstances for the recommendation, if it were other safety circumstances related to council. Because it seems like there's the emergencies relating to the city. But if there were, um, safety concerns for council. That could be done by a majority vote.
Yes, I don't understand the difference between circumst- related to safety beyond health, weather or emergency affecting the city versus what you're proposing.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of where I'm at, because there's like the safety for this emergency affecting the city. I, I guess what, I was listening to what Tanzi was saying, and saying that like, there might be safety issues related to council, is that what I'm understanding?
I think council or meeting attendees, and I think is, is really the, the kind of circumstance that I think we were trying to contemplate. Now, ultimately, if on the record, there's a feeling that this, the language that exists. In your, in your viewpoint would, um, would provide discretion for those kind of circumstances. I would just want to be clear that. To, to me, I read the definition of when virtual meetings is very narrow, um. And maybe in those kind of circumstances, and, and I agree with Councilmember Martinez, there, there is always the opportunity to. Adjourn a meeting if things are getting out of hand, um, I, I. I would just be, and I think this has happened in Colorado and other places, some places, this has been a string of things, and ultimately, it's. Some places this has been a string of things and ultimately it's gotten to the point where the amount of some places it's become a tactic to, to preclude business from happening. And so people have sort of forced adjournment of meetings and they've not, they've not been able to conduct business. So some cities have then just moved to a virtual forum where they could ensure that business could happen.
Well, with that example though, using tactics to preclude business is not all in the category of safety, in my opinion. It's using your.
Depends on the tactic being used, right?
I guess I'm, I'm thinking of the situation in Boulder and Aurora where you would have a public, public hearing on land use and you'd have two hundred people come in and they immediately start talking about the, uh, the police case. So I've heard that, I've heard those meetings and that is why Aurora would lay an all part rule. And, um, but I don't think that falls under our recommended rules.
Well, so I think this is where we, where I would maybe say there is the argument generally when those meetings have been adjourned is because of concerns about safety of the participants. That's generally why they have, the meetings have gotten out of control and that's generally why they have adjourned the meetings because of the, the activity that is happening. And so again, it, um, there, there may be, again, if it's, we, we're here for your direction to either not address it or if there, if, if the council wants that flexibility for those kinds of considerations, perhaps there's alternative language that, that better describes those kind of circumstances.
I guess Tammy, from a legal perspective, other emergencies affecting the city, would that fall into that or is that too narrow?
You know, it's broad language and we don't define emergency, so arguably, arguably it could. I think that's why there's a proposal to kind of clarify that, yeah. So that we're not wondering if we do see a threat, if it's qualified emergency.
Right, so Justin says B.
I agree with Justin.
I wa- I like the recommendation.
I'm good with recommendations.
I'd like A as well.
Not A, but the recommendation. Or Sir Karen?
Splitting.
It is.
It's such a hairsplit here, so. We could, if there was some sort of situation that we can obviously convene and make that decision. So then I don't see the need if we always have that option, so. Be something clear and present danger, then we will make a quick decision that it's not in our best interest to be in person for our own safety and I think that will be apparent, so. I don't think there's enough deviation to change it unless some sort of language changes and we come up as, come up with something better. Right now it's so close to watching it.
I agree. I don't think there's any reason to change it at this point in time. It doesn't mean that that wouldn't come up later.
I guess what is the difference or what is the one thing that you feel is different about the recommendation versus not changing it? That would be what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so the, the definition right now, health, weather, or other emergency affecting the city to, to us feels like it's a exterior thing. It's, um, it's kind of in the pathway of it's not practical to hold a meeting because of some kind of disruptive thing that's an emergency and affect the whole jurisdiction versus. Now, again, if there's, and I, I think from what I'm hearing from the discussion is ultimately if there are other kind of disruptions, you would rather handle them on a case by case basis as the council.
We haven't heard from Jessica or Roberta yet, so.
I guess so, is it just the word affecting or the section about affecting the city that is what you're looking for?
It's the circumstances related to safety beyond.
That affect the city, oh, they already both say that. I think it's just very close. I guess if it's just that section and it's not any different, I don't see what difference it makes if we go with the recommendation either. I'm okay with one, either one, if there's not that much of a difference, but it makes the staff feel like there is enough of a difference, then sure, I go with the recommendation.
And Roberta?
I'm gonna go with B.
All right, we'll treat him as a case by case.
All right, thank you. The next item is remote participation by council members. So currently, um, remote participation is allowed in extenuating circumstances not to exceed more than four different meeting dates within a calendar year and notice should be given twenty-four hours in advance if possible. Uh, this, and then also allows for, um, remote participation based on reasons protected by state and federal law. Most, uh, cities allow for remote participation and do not have a maximum number of meetings that can be missed or it can be remote. Uh, two cities do not allow remote participation at all and then one has a limit of three per calendar year. So some options, we don't have a recommendation on this, but some options would be to allow remote participation with no limit or increase or decrease the number of allowed meetings that can be remote within a calendar year or do not allow remote participation except for reasons protect, protected by state and federal law.
Wouldn't option D be, be the same? Just enacted that, really, I mean, it's not even been a year since we've made that change, so.
I'll just leave it alone.
I'll take option D, leave it, because we just had very extensive conversations earlier this year going round and round on this and that was what we all agreed on. Or at least for the most part, so I don't, don't want to increase it, decrease it. I don't want to have no limit and I also think there are circumstances where, you know, Tony's being a recent example where remote was beneficial to his, his health and surgery, so. You know, pick and choose when you use those four wisely, but I, I don't want to change, I want D, no change.
Keep it as is, yeah.
And again, I think trying to go back to that last discussion, the health, would, it would be an exemption from the four, correct?
It'd be a benefit to that because it says.
We're not going to hold that against.
So it's four for whatever reason you want.
Yeah.
And then if you have a reason.
Serious injury, then yeah, you can't get around.
Sounds good, we're gonna leave that one alone for now.
Yep. All right, thank you. And then the next one, this is the last, would be audio and visual presentations during audience participation. So currently, audio and visual presentations of original content not subject to copyright protection must be submitted to work's office, uh, no later than ten AM on the Monday prior to the council meeting. And then as a practice, we do have legal review and then send it to council as an FYI. Uh, several other cities do not allow or do not address, um, audience presentations. There is one other city that only allows, uh, PDFs to be presented. And so some options, again, we do not have a recommendation on this one, but some options are to allow printed handouts only or to allow PDF visuals with advanced notice and legal review and so not allowing any audio or visual presentations. And then third option would be to continue as is to allow the audio and visual presentations with the advanced notice and legal review.
I like A, but the same rules apply to council.
Do you see? Because if it's like the doctor B or something and someone has a highlight reel, like again, we're, we're looking for reasons to, I guess, keep out the bad, but in making a decision as significant as printed only or PDF only, then we lose the ability for others to share. Again, it could be high school marching band, you know, trying to present to us and now they can't show their video or their robotics competitions. So. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I want all that, I want, I want to have like, you know, and there, there was really cool presentations, I think when in twenty twenty-three, I think before I was in council, but this guy came in with like land use or architectural stuff. But here's what, I don't think it's appropriate for a public comment. I'd want to bring those in and I think that we should, I think they should come in, let us put them on the schedule, like the presentation section of our agenda. If you can talk about it, say, hey, somebody wants.
That wanted to, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, exactly, like somebody wants to come in and they've got a, they want to make a presentation and, you know, students is one example or it could be some community member who has a, you know, a, a issue they feel very passionate about and want to come in and present. Because, well then, we can discuss it at a planning session and, and, um, maybe they could even come in and tell us, you know, what is it you want to do here? And we can talk about it and decide then and there, if we want to give them the actual time. The other reason is, the three minutes is just like this condensed thing, what if we want to hear like more? I only have three minutes, so I, I think we, we give people an opportunity to present all whatever they want as long as they come to us and we all agree.
We all agree?
No, no, we majority agree, so like we agree as a body, but with majority consensus, also we want to do, then. Or if you want to talk about a higher threshold, we could talk about that, but I just feel like we should give them the right menu for that. And I don't think public comment is that menu, so I would, I think, I can't tell the difference between A and B, but something about just printing and printing it out and giving it to the clerk and then we get it would be fine, but.
The, the difference between A and B is like physically handing it out versus a static that we would show up on the screen, no video.
No, I would say A then, because, uh, I don't know, yeah, yeah, A, A, because I think that the public comment time is to use your voice or if you need accommodations through other means, um, and not using some kind of.
Video presentation.
If they really want to do that, then they could come and ask us and we can discuss whether it's worth the time on our agenda or not.
I liked where you started with that because I think that filters out some of maybe the disruptive stuff and if students are bringing a presentation, they, we give them the same amount of time and respect in which they're doing to put together for us. Love that piece. Don't love the second piece where it's handouts printed only because somebody may, you know, if it's PDF visual or even just a still photo and it is public comment and they're just saying, this is what I see every day and it can be an encampment right on the other side of their fence and they're just trying to provide a visual with their comment. So I would not be opposed to, uh, getting rid of the audio and videos and just having the ability to present a photo or a still so that we can see what they're trying to convey to us, so. Um, yeah, but I really love the whole moving the audio video west into presentations because then we will see, oh, this is a positive thing we should give the time to or this is a bit disruptive.
Student presentations, they had stills, they didn't have.
Yes, it's a group photo of them at robotics and if we take away, if we go with A, then they can't even do that and show a picture of their team. So I'm fine with B. Um, and then I really love moving audio, video into presentations because there has been times where it would have been great to have some.
I don't know of any videos that have been presented that were positive. Those have only been stills.
Very well done.
The only person, there's only been one person who's ever had video in my twelve years on council.
Then there'll be far less presentations.
So can I clarify if there's support for this idea? Because I do think it's a new provision we would add, want to add to your rules of order and procedure that, individuals or groups can make a request to be added to presentations. We can, uh, kick something around for you to see in terms of what that language for your rules of order and procedure would, would be um, in terms of process.
So we've had a lot of conversation though, so I think there's consensus to remove the video piece from public comment. So then the question is A or B? Can I just get a show of hands for A? I'm still for A. And for B? All right, so B it is. And sorry, Roberta, I didn't see what your hand did.
And again, support for a provision around a, a process to make requests for presenting, to, to be added to the agenda for public presentations.
I, I, I was good with B, um, I just wanted to ask like, does this count for council as well? Like if we wanted to show something, I've, I've shown a couple of things and I try and be positive about it. It's usually things I, I just want to show the community or educate folks on.
You've only done stills, Roberta.
So that would be okay then, right?
It would still apply to council, B would still apply, I believe, to council.
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna slip in maybe one last of a conversation that happened this morning. But so it didn't have the opportunity to get reflected here. Um, we were talking about future agendas and want to throw out another opportunity that I think has created some confusion vision with the council. Right now, all of your public hearings are listed similarly under public hearing regardless of whether they're quasi judicial or they're legislative. And so, uh, we, we could, um, modify your agenda to be clear about which hearings are quasi judicial and which ones are legislative. And we could reflect that a little more clearly in your rules and it might be more predictable for the public that's coming to participate in those. So that was, that came up through a different discussion this morning and we wanted to kind of plug that in as another, um, slight cleanup opportunity.
I think that's a great idea.
If we're working on agenda, I'd like to make a recommendation that we move the council comments up to follow the public comments and then do the hearings after that because usually by the time we get to do the, uh, council comments and the hearing's gone there, most of the audience has left and, and does not give us much of a chance to respond to, uh, public comments that were made after this. So just move the, um, council comments to follow the public comments.
I agree with Tony.
That was what it was before, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
So what does council think about that? I have two people that have said that. Back to the way it was.
The only challenge is that when you have multiple public hearings and then the council has eight minutes each, that's an hour plus for comments, that people that are waiting there for a public hearing could possibly be sitting for three hours before they get to go, so when you.
That's why we moved it in the first.
It's too long in between when you have residents coming in for the last public hearing, a hundred and thirteen signed up. Are we really asking them all to sit there and then wait another three hours? It's just, there's a gotta be a better balance between the two and, and that is why we changed it. When, when you have, you know, developers coming in or you have anybody coming in for that matter, it's just way long.
And that's business and they want to get to that portion of the meeting.
And then if we don't start a public hearing until ten o'clock, that's really hard to make decisions that are going to impact the city when it could go on for three hours and then it's one o'clock or two o'clock. So if you're going to change that, I would suggest you change the eight minutes out of council and go back to three because an hour is a long time for us to have to speak.
It used to be five. Technically, we never even had to talk about it before and that, that's only a recent change, but maybe we can be more mindful as council members when we have, because that night of the public comment, none of us gave council comment. But of course, it was at the end and we were all tired. Yeah, and everybody was gone, yeah. Go ahead, Justin.
It's gonna sound silly, but I like the, the way it is now encourages me to talk less.
We could change that, we, we're shortening the eight minutes.
There's a lot of people in there, makes me want to holler.
That sounds like a you problem. If we shorten us from eight minutes to three minutes, we get the same amount of time as the public gets.
I just think it's spindly, it is, that's my, my comment.
So Justin says no change, Roberta and Tony say move it back the way it was. So Justin says no change, Robert and Tony say move it back the way it was.
Do you believe it?
No change.
Karen says no change.
I still think you should change the number of minutes down from eight.
I would agree with that, too. I think we should go back to five. Okay, well, let's start with the change it or no change, so. No change, no change.
Whenever the council thinks is the best.
No change, I think having the hearings earlier is beneficial to the residents that wanna speak on hearing hours.
Tony?
I sure like to change it, because I recommended it.
Down and change it too, Dave?
No change.
No change, alright, so no change, what about changing to five minutes instead of eight for council?
Or how about three?
Can I get two, can I get one?
I don't know any other council that does eight minutes anywhere, it is outrageous to have an hour and twelve minutes of council comment time during a. Again, I won't be here to sit through that hour, twelve minutes, so.
I'd be good with five. Dave, Tony, Karen, Chris?
I'm still three.
So you're less than, okay.
I'm not gonna be here, I'd rather not have council comments at all.
There is that option. No, I mean, you can always say I have no comments, so.
I never utilize the full eight, um, I think there's probably times in which maybe there's something to discuss, so. I find with eight remaining, I think we should use best judgment. As council members to say, do I really need to speak for eight minutes, or the feedback I've heard is. Residents stop listening after your first three, four, five minutes, and it gets to be so long-winded that you're not getting the effect out of. That long of comments, so. I think if it's.
Alright, so, if we don't change it, I will ask council to be mindful of the time, that we don't need to take.
We all use that judgment during the make a meeting, that. We're not gonna sit here for another hour to hear ourselves talking and leave room, man, one A.
Um, I, I would say no change, and I will make. Honest effort to be better about this, and I do think I have gotten a little better, but I, I will say that the reason why I don't wanna change is because. I, I feel like there was a lot of animosity, the reason why it was extended is.
Here anymore?
I, I know. It could happen again, just, you know, this whole, if there was a, a little bit more of. Leeway, but I, I don't trust that anymore, that trust has been gone, so, um, I'll just. All I have to keep for keeping the same, but also let you know that I hear your, your. And I will be more brief with my comments.
Alright.
Change for now on.
You're not share minutes either, you cannot give, everybody can't give Justin their eight minutes. Yeah, you're limited, alright, so no change there, anything else?
That was the last one, so we will bring forward changes.
Um, oil and gas.
So yes, city council at our, last time we discussed this, asked me to bring back an ordinance. Uh, to get started on some revisions to our oil and gas regulations. If you recall, we have um two hundred and thirty-three plugged and abandoned wells in Bro- in Thornton. And we have thirty-one um active wells, and this includes producing temporarily um abandoned and shut in. And temporarily abandoned, my understanding is those could be, those well sites could be started up again fairly easily, and. Shut-in wells have to go through a process at the state to start producing again, so. With that, we assessed what we have in Thornton, and um. This presentation is going to just basically outline the ordinance that we've come up with. To address and, and more fully investigate the oil and gas sites that we do have in Thornton, so we can get a handle on. What is out there and uh pursue enforcement where appropriate. So again, state law authorizes local governments to adopt necessary and reasonable rules to regulate the surface impacts of oil and gas operations. To protect and minimize, and minimize adverse impacts on public health, safety and welfare and the environment. It is this authority we would be relying on if council were to adopt this ordinance. The authority here includes uh the authority to enact monitoring and inspection programs of oil and gas facilities. Um, subject to city regulation and to impose uh inspection fees. Uh, again, our current regulations are in chapter eighteen, they regulate oil and gas operations, they were adopted in twenty seventeen. Uh, reenacted in twenty twenty-five, but basically remained unchanged. We have two oil and gas operations approved since the adoption of those new regulations, new as in twenty seventeen. Um, and that's the Washington pad, which is currently uh still at state level and. Has not received approval to proceed uh at the state level at this time due to a. An eagle nesting on the well site. And also, we did a produce water line under these new regulations. But generally, existing oil and gas facilities are exempt from our current regulations, so that is why. It is recommended that in order to have authority to go out and investigate our other oil and gas facilities. We consider an inspection program. Uh, so procedurally, uh, the development code text amendments require public hearings before the planning commission and city council. The planning commission had their hearing on this tonight, and on a four zero vote recommended, uh, council approve this ordinance. At September sixteenth, planning session, council directed staff to draft this ordinance, and um. If, if uh we're given direction tonight, first reading of this would be on October fourteenth. So next week, and second reading of this ordinance would go on October twenty eighth. So the applicability of this would be to all existing oil and gas facilities. Uh, and we defined a facility rather broadly to include any improvements used or installed on an oil and gas location. Primarily for the exploration, the production, the withdrawal, the treatment or the processing of crude oil. Condensate, EMP waste or gas, including the use of heat extracted with produced fluids. So that definition comes straight out of the Colorado State Energy and Carbon Management Commission's uh definition. And we want it to be con- uh consistent with that definition. At this time, as we approach this inspection program. So this ordinance before you would do three things, one, it would require these existing facilities to register with the city. Starting July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and uh have an annual renewal of that requirement. So, this provision would require us to provide some notice to uh all the operators, and it gives us time to do that. Uh, informing them, they're gonna be required to register and um the requirements of that registration. And then the required information we're considering for uh, at this point for registration is basically operator name, address. And contact information for emergencies, violations and inspections. Oftentimes, this information can be difficult to get at as well sites um change hands. And also, to provide us their emergency response plan, every one of these facilities has an emergency response plan. It would be important for the city to have these, um, if we are called in an emergency response situation to some activity at the well site. The second thing the ordinance does is inspections, it gives the city jurisdiction to inspect facilities with at least three days' notice. Less if we see there is an emergency, and to impose fees, and what that consists of is. Uh, an operator should reimburse us for our inspection costs. The city can report collection of this information to state and federal agencies, we make that clear. And operators must comply right now with some basic standards, we've included our noise standards. Um, reclamation rules for well sites, stormwater quality permits, and the city regulations there, we control. Um, operators must on a monthly basis conduct audio, visual, olfactory inspections. And use approved instrument monitoring methods, so we're requiring operators of these well sites to uh inspect them. Um, not only visually, but with certain equipment to ensure there are not uh leaks, et cetera. And then we have access to that information, because the city upon request can allow, uh, can inspect. All of the operators' records. And finally, any spills and releases must be reported to the city. While we can access this information on the state well site, I mean website, I, I think it's important that we get initial notice of any spills. Or releases. And then finally, there's registration, inspection authority and violations, currently we're leaving our violations as civil penalties. Uh, municipal court summons or other civil or criminal uh liability associated uh with these issues. So, we can summons these folks into municipal court if we find they're violating provisions of this new ordinance. Um, we can also pu- pursue other civil or uh criminal acts. Um, as appropriate under the law. And you know, the only thing I can think of there is, is likely, well, criminal acts are, are obvious if somebody does something. Uh, purposefully on a well site that causes, uh, you know, damage or a. Human health issue, or civil penalties may include um pursuing a restraining order of some type. But mostly, we want the authority to write them into municipal court and pursue violations in that manner. We have uh heard it from the American Petroleum Institute API. Um, they've reviewed this ordinance, we've shared it with them, and they say they may have a few minor suggestions. If we receive those suggestions this week and have the time to assess those, and if there's anything we think should go in our ordinance. Uh, we would do that, but bring it to council's attention on first reading, uh, it's probably important to have some industry feedback. Um, but again, we did not have those comments yet, so, and first reading is next week. So that's the summary of the ordinance before you now, certainly, as we inspect these well sites and do our desk audit of each of these well sites. If we determine other regulations may be necessary, we would bring those back to you likely in the first quarter of twenty twenty-six.
Chris?
I think um with the previous, previous, previous slide with the ordinance. The registration and then annual renewal, but then you mentioned that sometimes when they transfer management or ownership, then there's lost time. So if we're doing an annual renewal, somebody's renewed, two weeks later. It transfers to somebody else in the remainder of the year, then we've missed an opportunity to have direct contact with that new owner, so. What I would propose is transfer of management or ownership as another stage of. Yeah, so you have to register, you have to do the annuals, but anytime there's a change in management or ownership, you also have to do that, so that way.
Excellent suggestion, we'll do that.
Justin?
Can we do that, even after it's gone, the planning commission down?
Oh, I think we can, the planning commission recommends. They recommend approval of the ordinance as they saw it, but certainly, council always has the opportunity to direct changes to the ordinance. And the charter even allows that.
So between now and then, you can make adjustments, even after it's been noticed and everything?
Yeah, well, it'll be officially noticed before council for next week. So we can make that change before first reading, easily. And then that's the first time it's officially considered by the city council, and again, the planning commission is only a recommending body. There's nothing that precludes you from making additional changes. If we would see anything in the API recommendations, uh, we may just, that we think should be included, we may just bring that to you on first reading. But not make the changes, and if council agrees, we would make those changes between first and second reading. So we can make this change suggested by council member Russell, which is a good one uh before first reading.
Who becomes the enforcement body from the city, whereas is, is, does this ordinance need to be put in place first? Then we have the enforcement and the regulatory folks figured out after that?
Correct, this gives us the authority to enfo- enforce these provisions that we're adopting here. So without that, I mean, we can inspect our well sites without this ordinance. But we would be relying solely on the state to do any kind of enforcement or follow-up. Um, so, what we wanted was the authority to go on, do a visual inspection. Knowing that the state sometimes does not get to these well sites but once every two years or more. So it gives us the i- uh opportunity to get out there once or twice a year and really keep an eye on the well sites, and then if we see problems. Bring those to the attention of the state or the appropriate, I, I'm mostly to the, the state. And it would be the ECMC or the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that would bring these things uh their attention to. But also, we would enforce our own code provisions in this, and it gives us the authority to go on well sites with notice. So, uh, without that, we can only look in from the outside.
Would we, would we need to um uh employ somebody that has the expertise to know what they're inspecting?
Yes, and as I mentioned last time, we've been talking to Adams County about this, and we intend to. Uh, have a, one more discussion with them about this, they uh do it under an IGA with the state, they inspect all their well sites. They have many more well sites than us, um, and we could have Adams County inspectors do this for us, or we've also priced. Uh, these uh costs with a private contractor who is trained to do this too. And they would bring that information back to the local government designee in the planning department, like Garrett. And then we would pursue enforcement as appropriate when we get any violations.
Any objections? Thank you for bringing this forward, this is really good work.
No problem, thank you.
Alright, uh, next up, we have any board commissioner gains? Justin?
It's a quick one, uh, I'm gonna be, just let you all know, I'm going to. Testify in front of the C, C dot commission and uh a week on behalf of NDA, and also. City board advocating for, uh, you know, all the transportation initiatives. So, that'll be on the system.
Anybody else?
Just one thing, I wanted to ask if we would be okay having bus patrol come in and talk to us about. Their program, to introduce it to the city, or do we wanna have them meet with staff?
What is bus patrol? I have it in my office.
I was going to also bring, suggest that, so, um, bus patrol is a company that is. Working on a product that will go on, on a camera system, will go on school buses to. Do like automated red light cameras for people who run through the uh stop sign, when the school bus stops. Flashing red lights, and um they are trying to, well, he's grouping up. Um, I know it's a school district system, so I met with them, I said, you know, you can have school buses. Uh, but in order for them, they explained to me that in order them, for them to be successful, they need to partner with cities to help them. Have official uh summonses and for violations, and so I think the conversation that we would have with bus patrol. Would be around how the city can make, make that available through whatever assistance they have, how we, how we can. And have those violations go through our municipal courts, which I have no idea how that would happen, but that's what they would wanna talk to us about.
Is like a staff meeting first and maybe see what we need from council from there?
Yeah, if somebody can give us some contact information, I'll certainly follow up.
I don't have a blue box, Chris.
I'm gonna bring it to you. I wouldn't even tell you about it.
It was a box and you opened it up.
It was just you guys, nobody else got it. Others, other discussion I didn't. Others, other discussion items from council?
I have one.
Go ahead, Roberta.
Yeah, I was hoping that, and I've spoken a little bit to Tanzi about this, but Colorado Boulevard has numerous problems, obviously, with speeding and I was wondering like what we could do to maybe have some sort of study done and then just get data of like the crashes and property damages done along Colorado Boulevard and what our potential plans are for the future to mitigate some of the speeding that occurs along that area. I just feel like many of the more serious crashes recently have been along that area and I wanted to see what we could do to work on making it a little safer.
Sounds like a data request, at least at first.
Yeah.
Happy to address that. We do have a future item that was actually scheduled, I think, soon-ish on right-of-way standards and planning. I think that is one given long meetings that we hoped to defer maybe into next year. I think we could add this to the scope of that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and call to a special meeting of the city council. Can I please get a roll call?
Here, Paulman.
Here.
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 Here, President Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar. Here. Councilmember Zambra. Here. Councilmember Unright.
Here.
Office President Ryan.
Thank you. Noting that we have removed item A from this agenda. We have two executive sessions tonight. Can we please get an overview of the first one?
Yes, first one is with regard to request the state has sent us for certification with regard to our state grant that we are applying for. This has certain legal implications and it also brings us back to a discussion of the governor's executive orders on recent land use legislation. So we'd like to give you legal advice in executive session.
Are there any questions?
Any council would like to go into executive session, the motion would be for an executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, two, four, B to implore the city attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice regarding certification and compliance of various state grant applications as well as additional potential legal issues arising from the governor's executive orders D twenty twenty-five oh oh five and D twenty twenty-five oh one one. So move.
Thank you. In a second? All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed, please say no. Alright, then you give us an overview of the second executive session.
Thank you. This executive session is so that city council can talk to their consultant with regard to personnel matters regarding the municipal judge, the city attorney, and the city manager's annual performance review.
Any questions?
And if council would like to go into this executive session, a motion should be made to go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statutes twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, F to discuss personnel matters regarding the municipal judge, the city attorney, and the city manager's performance.
Can I get a motion, as stated?
So move.
Check it.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed, please say no. Alright, we'll give it just a moment to switch over the recording. Thank you, Roberta, appreciate it. Hope you feel better.